I lost that. They took the plan down on the center of government, so no more, no spending money. And even more than was awarded.
Yeah, that's right.
Everybody.
How are you?
Good.
All right, Grandma, or your mom rather. What's I need what? Have the kid go. I can't remember where we were.
We're good, I think. Well. Now we need to get the recording. I think it's on. Yeah, we're good.
All right. Go ahead and start our work, our pre-meeting, just in case it runs longer. Pretty short agenda this evening. We have minutes, which I know there will be some corrections too. But otherwise, Charlie, let's go ahead and see about legislative.
Do we want to start with any questions? Guys, want more detail than what was in the staff report?
Well, my question was, is what? This is pretty pretty.
Like, when, when did the original entitlements come in? I actually can't tell you the very beginning. I, I want to say there was a, some kind of a development agreement in the eighties. But the number that we're working with today came forth in two thousand, from the development agreement in the year two thousand. And then it was re, essentially readopted or memorialized with some clarity in twenty. Or fifteen, twenty fifteen. So. That's kind of the timeline. It's been around a little while. Yep. The goal that the applicant has is to essentially supersede all that. So wipe it all out, memorialize the density, memorialize the configuration. Um, but wipe all the past agreements out and start with a new one, which. Uh, I've been hoping for, for a little while, for the entire Wolf Creek Development.
Tell me a little bit more on the history of the zone. You've got three, four different zones.
And I don't know all the, all the details. I don't know why there are so many, uh, different zoning polygons in that particular area. I know a lot of it had to do with Wolf Creek and the creation of Wolf Creek Resort, um, or initially, when it initially came around. But I, I can't tell you why the polygons are shaped the way that they are. If you look at the agreement from the year two thousand as well as the twenty fifteen one. The RE fifteen zone was the, if you look at the configuration of the RE fifteen zone as it is now. That was the parcel that was designated, the four hundred and thirteen dwelling units. The FB three zone wasn't even part of Wolf Creek. So, right at that point, well, even now that. After today. Maybe you can consider it part of Wolf Creek if you guys, um, uh, do recommend approval. But technically, there is no development agreement on the FB three, the forty acre FB three, um, parcel. The, uh. RE twenty parcel, which is just a sliver of RE twenty to the south. That's currently in, is it Eagle Landing? Does it sound right? Eagle something? Eagle Crest? Um, and so it is governed under that development agreement, but there aren't any development rights associated with it. It's just a little triangle. And then the FR three, which is the one that I'm mo- most concerned about. Uh, because it has a lot of entitlements that would run with it if we didn't have development agreement restrictions on it. Um, that went with the, uh, uh, original, um. What's the development to the south?
Well.
Directly south of that. Fairways, fairways. So that, that parcel was tied to the fairways. And so if you look at it from twenty fifteen. The numbers were chunked out based on these larger parcels, which kind of matched zoning at the time. And now things have been scrambled because there have been so many different amendments to the agreement. There have been units that have moved around. There have been units that have been platted. Um, that the zone lines don't really mean anything anymore. Is that helpful?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions?
You. Explain a little bit about how pulling it out of the Wolf Creek Development Agreement makes sense for the county.
So the.
We have the authority to pull it out of that agreement.
Uh, we do. The county has the authority with the applicant, um, to, uh, to make changes. So the, the, the right to make changes to that agreement as it applies to the applicant's property. Um, is the applicant and the county. Um, the Wolf Creek Development Agreement, uh, the two thousand agreement, the twenty fifteen update. Um, it clarified a few things that left a number of things fairly ambiguous. Um, I don't see an expiration date on it at all, which, uh, I would never recommend a development agreement that does not have an expiration, uh, date on it. Um, it, uh, it doesn't have, uh. As much information as you see in the development agreement attached to the packet. Um, it doesn't talk about configuration. It doesn't talk about street connectivity. Uh, it, it's. Very vague and really the only thing that the twenty, um, fifteen agreement was intended to do is clarify who gets how many units. Because it went to several different owners, those units did. And it basically said, these many units go to this owner, these many units go to that owner, assigned based off of parcels.
And your staff's recommendation or suggestion is that we rezone, have this rezone all into RE twenty?
It is, uh, and I believe that. So RE twenty, the minimum lot size typically in RE twenty is twenty thousand square feet. Where this is a cluster subdivision, your lot sizes can go a lot smaller than that. But the overall density, uh, shouldn't be signi- significantly different. Um, we learned some hard lessons with a couple of developments in the valley that have the FR three zone attached to it. Um, one of which being the, um, uh, I think I mentioned the Nordic project in the staff report. Another one is the. CW land, um, over on the corner of Old Snow Basin Road and Highway thirty nine. Uh. They were given the FR three zone with the development agreement that said no more than a certain amount of, of houses. The whole question is, is where does the rest of the density from the FR three zone go if we have a TDR program in place? And so it's a little bit. Funky. Um, so my recommendation would go be to go with the zone that gives the amount of density rights that the applicant is seeking to memorialize. Or already has, but seeking to memorialize.
Yeah, because in the PRUD, it had already given that, and he still has that.
So, yep.
Except the small piece that he's wanting to add thirteen more.
Yep, yep, the thirteen.
Because the bridges was approved in two thousand and two, I think. They, they get to use the number of development rights that were authorized back then regardless of. There's nothing that can be done about that. That also correct?
Mostly. I, I, I don't ever want to say, uh, never say never and never say always, but, um. In twenty fifteen, the bridges was given the, the, uh, four hundred and thirteen development rights. In. That was, oh, sorry, twenty fifteen. In twenty sixteen, a PRUD was approved that, um. Designed and configured a subdivision for, what was it, three hundred and sixty-four units or, or somewhere around there? So today, they have maintained that PRUD. So even though it's a non-conforming PRUD or a grandfather PRUD, they can still continue to develop under. What was approved in twenty sixteen, um, which is significant. It's, I mean. Quite a bit of the four hundred and thirteen, uh, development rights. So if, for example, the county didn't want to grant a rezone, uh, in, in this case, they can still configure the way that, that twenty sixteen, um, approval, uh, was shaped.
You want to claim too that the lots are left out because they've been developed?
Yeah, so you'll find, uh, some, some blank spots on the map, um, some where the, the, uh, zoning colors on their maps don't show. Basically where it's shown as white on their maps, um, those are parcels that have been already platted. Uh, the staff report says ninety-four, it's actually ninety-five. Uh, units have been planted thus far. Um, and those are not being in, included in here. So they'll continue on with the RE fifteen zone, um, old development agreement, old approvals. But where they're pretty much built out, at least in terms of plating, I know there's still some buildings that can be built in there. Um, there's not a whole lot of risk or not a whole lot of concern on having the old agreements applied to it. There, I did get one phone call on this project and, uh, that is an individual who lives in one of those lots. Um, and he said that he may come and ask to have his property, uh, joined in with the RE twenty, just to keep the maps clear. But if he does that, my recommendation would be to look at all of those ninety-five units and, and rezone all of them. Um, we'll have to have a different hearing because we didn't notice those.
Back to us again. Okay.
My recommendation, if you did want to expand it to include those parcels, would be to have those owners come and ask the question themselves and address it at a different time.
But. You mean by a separate thing altogether, not tabling this for them? Okay.
Yeah, the applicant has requested a final decision. Actually, we're, we're about three weeks overdue to give them a final decision. Um. Mostly just because of schedules and noticing and all that worked out. Uh, and so they're asking for a decision from you guys. A, a, a final recommendation to the county commission.
So in the case of these other individuals. That would come back as an amendment?
No, if these other individuals come, it would just be their own reason.
They'd have to pay the fee and go through the pharmacist.
Okay.
Hey, tell me about, uh, is it a retaining pond or is it? On the water?
It's a, it's a water reuse pond that the applicant has worked with, um, the. Water sewer district there, um, to take over. My understanding is it'll hold, uh, reuse water for irrigation purposes. Um, and there's just some joint, um. Collaboration between the applicant and the district to make that work. They, the district will be putting a six-foot fence, um, around it. It'll be a black, final coated six-foot fence. Um, that's not something the applicant is doing. The district wants to do that for safety reasons. Um, they're concerned about liability if somebody falling in. I think initially that pond, the hope was it could be used as a recreational amenity. But. The district says, no, if this is going to be ours, we don't want people in there. Other questions? Is we get to sit and look at each other for the next fifteen minutes?
Very much. Director of Government, I will be, um, recusing myself in the discussion vote on this item. Is that in any way, can I still facilitate? The discussion but not participate? Or does, does Commissioner Barbe need to take over?
Um, if you feel like you need to recuse yourself, we should probably have Commissioner Barbe. What are your thoughts?
I think if you're talking about the meeting overall or this particular.
This item?
This item, it. I don't remember. I can look and see if we will say anything, but it does make sense not to even participate in facilitating the discussion.
Any questions about staff's recommendation?
Uh, no, this is just. My, my south pond. Properly recuse myself. I used to have to get up and leave the room and now I get to stay. I just won't sleep. So, I, I don't know if I'm allowed to forget. Did you get the answer that you were? Discussing in the chair reading about calling me another set and that happened?
Charlie at some point may explain what. He can explain that in the other.
Yeah, I'm happy to. And just to give you guys a little cue, cue up on what that is. Um, it's the part of the development agreement where, um, there's some administrative, um, organization going on where they're talking about what happens when. Um, they want to trigger outsourcing. I believe the way it's written now is they get the choice on when outsourcing is triggered. Um, that's not typically how the county operates. The county has an administration that's. Set up and has been working for a long time, the way that it has been. And so we mentioned to them that we'd rather not have those kind of, um, obligations tied to what the, what the county is doing. Um, once the city gets set up, um, with all of their organizational stuff, that they're going to want to have some persuasion on when outsourced consultants come in and what the outsourced consultants have control over as well. The struggle that I totally understand why the applicant is asking for is when you've got a new organization, oftentimes it takes a while for them to get their feet under them. Now, that, that's assuming that they're not contracting with the county, uh, to do that work. And. Not only do you sometimes get newcomers coming in who want to read the, um, development agreement differently. Sometimes if they're looking to potentially sabotage the development agreement, um, they organize the administration in a way that. Causes it to struggle. Um, and so to avoid that, the applicant has asked. Basically to say, look, if, if the city or the county or whoever it is cannot handle the administrative requests that we're submitting applications for, if we hate the developer. Um, then we want to be able to go to a outside consultant that has adequate, um. Professional skill to do the work. So if we were looking at, uh, subdivision flats, we would. Engineering firms looking at building permit, uh, reviews or building inspections, we'd outsource to a, a company that specializes in that. Which the county already does. We've already got entities on contract for that kind of review, review work. Um. We like to have the control over when we outsource. We know when we're getting logged, backlog on our work. Um, we also know when it comes to subdivision review and building permits, state code has very definite timelines on how quickly. The county or the future city has to turn those or at those reviews around. Um, and so for us, we know if we're getting close to me, uh, getting to the very end of those timelines and, and not getting our work done, then we should be pulling the trigger on getting some outsourced reviews in there. So our original request, um, back to the applicant was to, to strike that paragraph they've asked to leap it in, um. For your guys' consideration as well as for the, um, county commission's consideration. Any other questions about that?
Main thing that we outsource right now is their building. Permit reviews and inspections. Well, those are the two primary things that. We outsource.
The rate at which Western Weber is beginning to develop, I'm curious if we'll be looking to outsource on, um, engineering, uh, for subdivisions at some point in the near future. Any questions on the land uses? Being requested or.
So. I understand what you said there about the request. The, the request is that they would be able to use outside parties and not use the city versus the city using an outside party.
Uh. They would pay for the city to use an outside party. It would still be the city's contract, city's control over that. But they would pull the trigger. They would have control for pulling the trigger. So they would say, look, city. We want you to go get consultants because you're not processing these fast enough, um, at which point the city would be obligated to do that.
And in, if, if this, if that's, if it's left in there.
If it's, if it's left in there, yeah.
But the county doesn't operate that way.
No. No, we, we already know when we're getting overloaded. Now, we've just been doing it long enough and we've got the system set up to, um. To know when we're getting overloaded and when we need to start outsourcing. Um. How much do you think we outsource in terms of building, um, permits or building inspection? You know?
Probably about forty. Well, now we're going to be doing more sixty percent.
No, just the staffing resources that we have compared to the demand that we have.
Yeah. And we just have to do that because state code requires you to meet the fourteen days. And so when we see a bunch coming in and we know that we're not going to be able to meet that threshold. We outsource it. Was because we have to meet that fourteen days. Every city does.
Or county or jurisdiction or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, same with subdivisions, preliminary subdivision. I can't remember the rules. Or I think you got twenty days to do your first review on that, uh, for preliminary. And I think for final, you have fifteen days to do that. And any subsequent review that's required, you have the same timeframe. Um, so just. Kind of ties our hands on timing.
What a city that needs to be the same timeframes and parameters.
They are, they will be, yeah. That was one of the, one of the primary reasons I pushed back there as well is because new state code has already put in some. Qualifiers, uh, time limits. Um. If I were the applicant, just thinking from the other side of the table, I'd still want to see the language in there if I can get it in there because if the city still can't quite figure it out, at least I'll have a contract that says, hey, um. I'm preempting whatever you, you guys want to do and, and calling for a consultant. Um, and the city would be obligated to do that. Or if it stays the county, the county would.
When what about the results? Should we obligated to accept the results from outside source?
The way that it's written for a subdivision review or development review, um. If it's, uh, if it's a professional that's licensed in the state of Utah, just do that kind of work. Um, we won't question it unless we've got significant concern or, 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 uh, questions about, uh, the caliber and quality of work. We know something that they don't know, for example. Um, when it comes to building inspections, it's written in a way that we won't question it. The outside consulting building inspectors will have. Their own autonomy, essentially.
On this little table you put there, the staff reports for R twenty, RE twenty.
Mm-hmm.
There's some X's down applicant. What are the X's meaning?
They're taking it out, but not.
Yeah, they're not even considering that.
No, yep.
Yeah, that's just taken out of there.
It should, but probably not applicable or.
Probably the biggest one is the STRs. And in staff's recognition, we recommended that there's certain lots that we don't have them on. And that's more to protect the residents to the. West and in the southwest area where right now they don't have that.
Those forty-nine lots we don't have any STRs as I.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's, it's more of a buffer type thing, but right now, under that existing PRUD, they have rights to do it everywhere.
The three hundred and six, for three hundred and sixty-four units.
So they, they're requesting to go to the RE twenty, just so I can just summarize, but the RE twenty does not allow short term rentals because it's not a listed use.
Mm-hmm.
So they're asking for an exception.
Basically.
Because they currently have that right available, um, under the existing PRUD.
And the MPB overlay zone, that's one of the reasons why they're asking for MPB overlays because it gives, uh, the county flexibility. To allow uses like that, different kinds of uses than what the zone otherwise allows. In fact, if you look at the MPD overlay zone, you could potentially get some commercial uses. They're not asking for it, but. Um, with the MPD overlays on, you could potentially get commercial uses and stuff like that.
The MPD overlay zone is basically just like the. Other.
The, yeah, it's a lot like the PRUD. In fact, it's almost exactly like we were using the PRUD ordinance. And what I mean by that is. Because the PRUD ordinance said that a PRUD shall be done by conditional use permit, and we all know that conditional uses have to be approved as long as we can manage the, uh, uh, we can mitigate the, um. Detrimental effects. Yeah, thank you. Um, and so. With the way the previous PRUD ordinance was written, Kenny didn't have a choice. We had to approve those PRUDs. But the way it was written, it basically said, it was so open-ended, it looked like it was a legislative action. And so it was almost to the point that a developer asked for something and we were obligated to give it to them. Because it was administrative action, not legislative action. And so we repealed that in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one and replaced it with MPD overlay zone so that we could. We have that legislative discretion to allow some things to happen and other things not.
Well, last meeting, you had mentioned that when a, like, exception or a change of zone comes to place in, like, Western Weber.
Mm-hmm.
They request, you said some number of money. That they donate somewhere.
Yeah. Yep.
And I'm not saying that that needs to happen because we're not adding density or anything, but. In this case, you know, we're asking for a zone.
Mm-hmm.
Exception, at least for the short-term rentals, right?
Yep.
Where do you feel that the county's getting their? Benefit and why they should do this versus just allowing it to stay? I would probably say we're getting a buffer along the west and the southwest areas where right now we don't have that. They could go right up to it. So that's why we put that condition in there.
Just to keep the staff report simple, I didn't put the original PRUD plans in there, um, but you'll see that in the presentation. I'll, I'll do a little toggle where you can see how they're changing. Um, if they, if they don't get a rezone, we don't use our legislative discretion to grant them the ability to do what they're asking to do now. They still have the right to do that plan, which three hundred and sixty-four, um, lots, they could put the STRs all the way down the, the west side over there. And so, um, I don't know, I, I would think if I were in their shoes, if I didn't get the rezone, I would probably just continue on with that grandfathered right.
So they're requesting an overall rezone, but second choice would be to allow fringe. Little areas that are not renting on.
Um, so. We did. Yeah, we suggested that there be a buffer on the outside edges where existing residential is next door. Um.
Are they agreeing with that? Or is that?
Haven't had, haven't had the full conversation with them yet, so it'd be worthwhile to ask them in, in the meeting today. It's.
See that as a.
It is in the, um, recommendations in there.
It's those numbered lots. Well, there was, that's what, that's where.
Give me lots fifty-one through fifty-seven?
Yep.
Okay.
Right.
And when I was writing. Yeah, when I was writing the staff report, I didn't have the chance to, uh, confer with the applicant to see whether or not they were even okay with this. Um, and so I just kind of put a shot in the dark. These are variables that you guys can control, um, at least in your recommendation to the commissioners you can. So if you want to see different lots or you don't want to see that restriction, um, that's something you can definitely do.
So this is something that's going to happen tonight, right?
They're asking for a decision from the planning commission tonight.
But then we're supposed to figure out what, if we don't like your lots, we're supposed to figure out what lots we like.
Yep.
With no time to consider it or think about it or get input or anything else.
Yeah. Yeah, which if that on its face is, uh, concerning, there's no harm in you guys recommending denial. Because lack of time to consider it.
Well, I think what I heard you say is. I just put a shot in the dark and named a bunch of lots. It may not be that these are the best lots, but I just threw out some numbers.
Kind of. I didn't roll the dice. I was in a shock.
It's specific lots along the west boundary and the southwest, so it makes a transition. Yeah, so there is a basis for the lots. Definitely. Yeah, we didn't take a shot in the dark. It was just, it was to make that transition so that. Um, those residents have that, um, buffer.
Okay. I've got, I've got an app on my phone. It's a, it's a coin flipper. That's how I just flip the coin and decide which one goes in.
Well, it's not, it's a magic.
Gentlemen, we're going to need to take the discussion.
But you haven't, you haven't discussed these laws, this council, with you.
Yeah, no, so it's worthwhile to talk to them about it too. Yeah, no, so it's worthwhile to talk to them about it too.
You did a great job.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening. We're gonna call to order the Ogden Valley Planning Commission meeting of January twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. This evening, uh, as the roll call, we have All seven commissioners are in attendance. We have Commissioner Frower, Commissioner, uh, Burton. Commissioner Schweppe has stepped out for one moment. We'll be right back. Commissioner Wambler, Commissioner Morby, Commissioner Barber, Commissioner Schuman. All in attendance. At this time, I will ask for any, uh, mentions of conflict of interest or ex parte communication. To which I myself will address, um, Number of years ago, I'm sure if it was two thousand and sixteen, something like that. Um, my family made an early investment into the development that will be discussed in the legislative section of tonight's meeting. And as such, we currently hold a promissory note on a residential lot. And so in order to avoid any perception of impropriety or bias, I will be recusing myself from the discussion and vote of tonight's agenda item In the legislative section. Uh, so Vice Chair, uh, Barber will be managing that section of tonight's meeting. From there, we'll go on to the minutes. I know I have a couple of notes on the minutes. Um, Marge, I'll read these out For the record, uh, on page one of the staff report, which is The meeting minutes for November nineteenth, twenty twenty four. At the top of the page, instead of a work session, if we could have that changed to it being a regular meeting. As well as I believe it might have been addressed, but the Western Weber Planning Commission will be changed to Ogden Valley Planning Commission. Page one. On page three. Paragraph. Five, uh, last line starts with Ford, Mr. Ford. It's actually Mr. Fuller, the applicant's. Page three. And then page five. Uh, paragraph. Um, about seven, when we're calling for motions. Uh, paragraph seven, Chair Wambler called for a vote on the motion to deny the application. Uh, it says Commissioner Barber and Schuman voted aye, and then there's a line To be removed that says Commissioner Frower, Morby, Schuman, and Wambler voted aye. That line is restrikened. The next line, Commissioner Burton, Frower, Morby, Schweppe, Schuman, and Wambler. Schuman should be stricken. Uh, the five names that should be remaining are Burton, Frower, Morby, Schweppe, and Wambler. They voted nay. And the motion on the vote was five to two. Um, in the next paragraph, so I believe that's eight. Second line from the bottom, it has Commissioner Schweppe seconded the motion. I believe that was Commissioner Frower. Seconding the motion. And those are my notes. For the minutes, does anyone have anything to add? There's nothing else to add, then I move that.
I called in the change. I'm not sure if that got made. Let's see. Something about.
I've got the notes.
You, you got, you changed it.
I haven't changed it yet, but I've got the notes.
Okay.
So if those changes are then made, um, estimated by myself and Commissioner Burton, then I move that the minutes be approved. They are approved. Um. Alright, so we'll be moving on and Vice Chair, uh, Barber will be leading the management of this evening, uh, this section of the meeting.
So evening, we have one legislative item. I'm directed from what you can reduce that. Can you put, um, this is a legislative item. You'll be making a recommendation to the legislative body, the county commission. Um, on this one, the applicant has requested the requirement in state code that Um, due to the length of this being the end, you have to make a deliberation this evening. Either approving or denying it. Um, tabling is not an option. I guess you could table it, but it would Um, basically be a denial vote and go to the county commission. This is a public hearing, so it'll be to open and close the public hearing, um, with a motion and Mr. Newell will be presenting. And the applicant is here, um, and if you'd like to request, uh, do a presentation, um, or to.
And the applicant has asked to, uh, address you with a few comments after your presentation. So looking at the bridges development, uh, just to take a look at where we are here. Um, we're looking at, uh, that configuration of property. Um, you can see the existing component of the bridges development, that'll figure that goes up into it. Um, it, it's already been plotted, uh, it's already been approved under, uh, PRUD that was, uh, approved, but, uh, back in twenty sixteen. Accountant's looking to, uh, get the rest of the property, um, master planned under a, a new agreement. Um, and the reason for the new agreement is a little bit because the old agreements or line or series of agreements, including permits Are a little bit, um, confusing to follow. Um, it'll take a Small manual for someone to figure out how it all works. I've got it on my laptop if everybody has any questions. Um, and, uh, to have a single agreement that, um, specifies A little bit better specificity, how the road configuration should be, how the lot configuration should be, open space amenities, that kind of thing. Um, that'll get a better outcome for the county and for the future city, uh, in terms of Setting expectations, uh, where they need to be. Uh, and that really is what we're in the business of doing is, is helping set expectations both for the developer, for the applicant, for, uh, leadership. The current zone for, uh, the project, uh, they've got the RE fifteen zone, FD three, FR three, RE twenty zone. Um, the RE fifteen, you see the kind of horseshoe configuration around the FP three zone. That is the Configuration that received the density, um, from the Wolf Creek Development Agreement, the four hundred and thirteen rights. The other thirteen rights that was listed in your staff report would be coming out of the forty acre FP three property. Um, even though there is a, a little bit of FR three and RE twenty Under their existing agreement, none of the density that's in the FR three or RE twenty zones, um, would be applied. Um, under the new agreement, we would suggest doing the same, just sticking with the density of the old agreement. Uh, under the new agreement, if approved in under the new zone, if approved, you have a zoning method looks like this. So matching the RE twenty zone here, pulling it up into the rest of the property with the exception of property that the applicant doesn't, uh, no longer owns. Um, and it is possible for these properties to be resold to the RE twenty to kind of mash things up overall. Um, however, the applicant has requested that to not be considered as part of their request. And so any one of those landowners could come in or all of them could come in and ask for that change themselves in the future. So there's concept plans in your staff report, um, At the very end of the stack report. Um, now you could see in this concept plan, this is the original, the existing master plan. This was approved in twenty sixteen, uh, by virtue of a PRUD, uh, initial use permit. And that PRUD, uh, approved in this configuration, three hundred and sixty four of the four hundred and thirteen units assigned to the property. What that means is that the applicant, um, has planned on since twenty sixteen, since that was, uh, approved Has planned on coming back to figure out how to configure the remaining pieces that, um, the difference between the two. Um, and again, the other thirteen, um, comes from this forty acre piece in between here. Current rights, as I mentioned, three hundred and sixty four units and existing PRUD, the cabin lots, the short-term rentals, um, and Not to be overly critical, but they've got a right to disconnect their streets, uh, like is shown On this, uh, on this plan here. Um, and then the forty, forty nine remaining units Are to be planned at some point in the future. They're asking for that to be planned now with this New configuration. So I'm just gonna kind of do a little bit of back and forth so you can see the difference. You've got a few new units coming in, a few new, uh, lots coming in, uh, both in cabins and in, uh, larger lots. As well as better street connectivity. Uh, one of the things that we were able to do is work with the applicant on the previous, uh, there's a lot of dead end roads in here, uh, to make connections wherever they came from. Which, um, always helps make better community. This is the, um, street layout that was approved in twenty sixteen. Those are the connections that are missing that the applicant is willing to close the gaps on. Uh, red meaning they're gonna build a full-size road, orange meaning they're either gonna stub Or they're going to provide a emergency egress in those locations. Um, the emergency egress and the stubbing to outside properties, I think was one of my most Was one of the biggest things that I was pushing on, on this with the applicant. Um, think about, uh, um, Pacific Palisades and, and the fire that happened out there. Every time that kind of thing happens, I think about the Ogden Valley and ignoring them because it is in the wildland urban interface of, of our area here. So better connectivity you can give, the better off you are. Um. And if you look at how that looks overall, once the connections are all made, um, you see that here. One thing you'll note is that brown line in the middle wasn't there. That brown line is a ten-foot wide multi-use pathway. Um, the applicant is proposing to connect that, eventually the whole is to connect it through the golf course to the, um, pathway that's on, uh, highway one thirty eight. And then tie that all the way through the golf course, all the way through to the, um, north, uh, western edge of this project. The property to the north of this project, um, it is in the F five zone and it is a considerable amount of acreage. So if they wanted to do a cluster subdivision in that area, they could get a considerable amount of density to the north. Um, it's a blocking them out by not having street connections to the north would be, I think, a mistake. It would cause That developer to have to figure out how to put the roads a different way, which would just pull people, um, uh, Probably out around to the north and west, um, Instead of making a good connection through the subdivision out to highway one fifty eight. Go through the points of the development agreement and again, just doing it briefly, you guys stop and ask questions, it'd be happening as we go along. Uh, so The proposed development agreement does not apply to lots previously plotted. It repeals and replaces all past agreements and permits on the property. Uh, memorializes density of past agreements as the density from the forty acre property, the plus thirteen units And supports the rezone of the entire property to the RE twenty zone. It better requires emergency egress, uh, required, sorry, requires better versus the egress, requires better internal street connectivity, requires better connectivity to adjacent properties as well. Um, and again, that's important for those properties that haven't been developed, but as well as the ones that already have been. You've got two stubs coming in per sheet free Into this property that, um, should be utilized. Um, The, uh, proposal provides a one foot four Miles, so one foot four miles of, uh, technical white, multi-use paved pathway. Um, it secures a hundred and forty-six acres of open space. Uh, and requires two parks that are open to the public and a clubhouse, um, which would be for the use of the HOA. It limits uses, uh, that are allowed in the RE twenty zone to those uses generally incidental to single-family dwellings with one exception, but I'll, I'll tell you about it in a second. Um, I'll tell you about it right now. It continues to allow, uh, short-term rentals as previously approved. So RE twenty zone doesn't have short-term rentals listed in it. Their PRUD that was approved back in twenty, um, sixteen did approve, um, short-term rentals. It approved any one of the units, the three hundred and sixty-four units to be used for, uh, short-term rentals. Um, not to say all of them will be, just it's a lot to. Does changing this, does changing this allow them to continue to do the short-term rents of all of those, all of those Buildings, all of these ones? You guys have some discretion, uh, in, in limiting that, but just Use caution when you're doing that, because as we mentioned, as we go back here, um, looking at the difference between that and that Under this plan, which is approved now and they're entitled to, and they can keep planning with short-term rentals. You've got all of those lots that could be short-term rentals. And so You need to find a way to, if you like where this proposal is going, find a way to work with the applicant to Not Reduce the amount of rice that were already given that are grandfathered in the property, um, to, to a level that would make it untenable for them. Um, so there's a balancing act in there. Um, Working with them, we, we tried to strike that balance. Um, and what we did was, um, well, what staff did, um, Uh, separate from working with the applicant is we're recommending a limitation on the short-term rentals to Be only those that were previously approved in two thousand and sixteen. If you guys want to put even more restrictions on that, um, use your discretion and, and maybe discuss that with the applicant. Um, one of the things that was discussed and requested, uh, in our work session is consideration for, uh, housing capability, housing affordability. Um, and the applicant said the cabins that are being proposed, those are one thousand square foot cabins, two-bedroom cabins. Um, arguably the most affordable, um, housing type that you can find in the Ogden Valley right now. And I would say that's true as long as there are some available for sale or long-term rent. Um, but if they're all used for short-term rentals, I don't know that you're gonna find a kind of a affordability. Um, but if they're all used for short-term rentals, I don't know that you're gonna find a kind of a affordability come out of that. Um, reduces the area setback requirements from the RE twenty zone, to make remember the old phases allows very small lots for those cabins. Um, staff, we are ready to do approval, we've got some stipulations to see in your staff report, we've also got some comments on the margins on the. Um, uh, proposed development agreement that we'd love to see better clarified or addressed before it is. Receives final approval by the county commissioners. We're asking for where the cabins are located, we're asking for sidewalk connectivity, right now a master plan shows some sidewalk connectivity. I'd like to see each parking lot connected to each other, so if you went from one parking lot to another parking lot, you could stay on sidewalks. Given costing some screens, um that way, if there is a concern about some cabins having parking issues, there are other parking lots that people can hit to and from. Um, fairly quickly and efficiently just by using sidewalks. Um, the previous approval, a period of approval did not have any sidewalks in the rest of the subdivision. And so we're not suggesting, we're just suggesting stick with what their um standards were at that time, with the exception of where these cabins are. Um, the applicant has asked for um many of the uses in the RE twenty zone. Um, but the language that they've asked for is a little bit different, I suggest just using the language for the RE twenty zone. There's a reason why things are written the way that they are and uh losing some of that language loses some of the context. Um, and then my suggestion um is to limit the short-term rentals, only allow us previously approved. And allow no more than fifty percent of the cabins to be SDRs, now those numbers are variables, you guys decide what's most appropriate. Um, and I'm I'm sure the applicant will have a a comment or two about that. Um, and then we are are also suggesting uh to not allow the lots that are. In proximity to existing residences to have those short-term rentals, so coming back to this map here. See my mouse. Review. You can see. The grid. Uh, these parcels over here along the edge. These are all adjacent to residential in in Sheep Creek, as are some of these over here. Um, and so the parcels that are in proximity to Sheep Creek, as well as there's a few uh, you know, a few dozen acres on the uh to the south of this. Um, property that could be um rural residential in the future as well. Um, and so when we're looking at that, I would think it'd be nice to have some of those uh short-term rentals buffered away from those properties. And you'll see that in your staff recommendation. Yeah. Okay, that's my uh presentation, because the applicant is requesting the final decision. Um, as they are, uh they're asking for you guys to either do a thumbs up or thumbs down to the county commission and. Put whatever recommendations you have in there, uh regulation for denial or approval. Um, that you see fit, just make sure whatever you're doing, you support them with volumes, any questions for me?
Uh, could you repeat what you said in the other room about um using outside resources?
Yeah, yeah, so the development agreement has a lot of stuff in there that isn't um just land use oriented. Um, one thing that isn't uh land use regulation is um. The possibility of using um outside consultants to do reviews, like subdivision reviews, building permit reviews, building inspections. Um, but the applicant has asked for is, they would like to have the ability to trigger when an outside consultant is required to be used. Um, a lot of applicants uh across the board really like that idea. Uh, because they don't have to wait for the jurisdiction to get his administration lined up to uh to to do those reviews. Um, county's already lined up, we're already ready to do those reviews and we know when it's time to hire outside consultants, and so we retain that control. Um, the applicant is asking to add a little bit of that control so that if the city isn't quite ready administratively to uh. To to follow essentially the state code timelines, the applicant can reach out to, well, actually, the applicant can ask the city to reach out to a consultant. Um, to to do those reviews, the other thing that the development agreement is requesting is um that. The uh, the city or the county, if this was allowed, would have limited ability to challenge what those outside reviewers. Um, what their reviews are unless there's clearly some legal problem. Staff has recommended that section be pulled out of the development agreement. Uh, the applicant has asked for it to at least be reviewed by you guys, our county commissioners with it in. Um, primarily with concerns that the city might not be quite up and running at the point that there. Uh, where rumors hitting the road for these guys, they're really trying to move forward quickly. That, fifth question, any other questions for me?
You show that slide you had there on the SDRs.
This one here.
Yeah, so allow only that. What was previously approved, three hundred and sixty-four minus lots, oh. Not counting the lots or?
Yeah, so explain why you're doing that for. And let me come back, so that the area in the RE fifteen zone, if the rezone was granted, the area that's left over. Those all have the right to do short-term rentals, there's ninety-five of those, I believe, my staff course at ninety-four. Uh, the applicant actually correctly said they planted ninety-five, okay. So if the original approval for SDRs was three hundred and sixty-four, it's three hundred and sixty-four minus ninety-five.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, and then on um your staff recommendation, paragraph two, A, C. Talking about specific aesthetic and safety standards. I can understand safety standards, what are s- aesthetic standards?
Sorry, just a moment to get the context here. Sorry, which is number two.
Two.
C.
C.
First line, oh, so there are two items or two uses that the applicant is requesting stay tied to the property from the RE twenty zone. Um, one is water detention facility and the other is a public utility substation. Under the RE twenty zone, both of those are listed as needing a conditional use permit. And we do that because each utility use is slightly different, especially slightly different on each property that they're on. And so there are unique circumstances that come up, uh that we want to address a little bit differently on a case-by-case basis. Um, the applicant is is requesting those be changed from conditional use to on the property to permitted uses. My recommendation is, if that's what we're gonna do, which is just fine to do, uh we should have specific standards. All the safety and aesthetics, so screening, fencing, um if it's a building, what should the building look like, that sort of thing.
So you basically recommend copying over what's in the picture there for RE twenty?
E- either we just do what's in the RE twenty and and list these as CMPs for the planning commission or the future city's planning commission to address later. Or we should get in there and and really analyze the potential detrimental effects now and get it in the development. So I'd recommend either way.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Are you ready to hear from the applicant?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Mister Chairman, members of the planning commission, my name is Bruce Veron, counsel for the project. What I will, I try to do is address the questions here, address everything that was raised in the pre-meeting. Uh, I've got about six, ten, or fifteen hard stops, so I'll be maybe laterally, you know, there's questions after, as we go to the the actual developers. But I wanted just to summarize it, because I think I can do it somewhat a little quicker sometimes. Uh, first, uh, I want to thank you all for the good discussions and, you know, at the pre-meeting and raise some issues, I'm gonna try and discuss some of those. I want to say upfront that we we disagree, actually disagreed with Charlie on very few things here, but a few, one one moderately major, the others. Not very major, but the the most important thing we we disagree on is a little bit that. We're not the ones necessarily proposing the zone change, it was actually the city's, the county's original idea to do a zone change. To clean this up, because the zone change, the zones that sits now doesn't make any sense, some of those zone boundaries go across. Uh, property lines, for example, across logical roads, they go across. Their straight-line boundaries and they just don't make any sense, the uh, the county's original version was to change it all to one zone. And we completely agree with that, and the county's other version was to leave it as open space. But we suggested we do is make it a master development agreement with RE twenty setting, and I hate to use the word density, but it's setting the number of units. And it's also setting most of the design slash building standards with a very few exceptions. So it's easier to to just incorporate the RE twenty rather than create the own, our own zone. But primarily, it's the RE twenty zone with the MDA having some other requirements, including all of the goodies that that Charlie talked about. So that's why we got to the RE twenty, because it makes sense for all of us, we don't have to worry about where. A zoning line lies with regards to a property line, at one point the map of the plans actually had. Uh, the zoning going across several of the lots and. What standards do we apply, it it just didn't make any sense to do it, and many of the zoning districts that we had, as Charlie mentioned. Left uh more flexibility for us than you wanted. The other reason to do it with an MDA with a zone change is frankly, as Charlie said, with the history of this. Zoning, CUP, PRUD, all those other things, this was fairly difficult to uh understand. If we'd gotten into a fight about it, um, I would not have wanted to be the one to explain it to a judge. Uh, and we don't want to get in a fight about it, so the theory was we will sit down, we will work with staff. We will work with you, we will work with the county commission to come up with a plan that we all agree on. And then we'll clarify it and record it in a development agreement, so we don't have to worry about any further uncertainties. We can all move forward, whether this is in the city or whether whether it's in the county or whether it's in the new city. We all know what we're getting, it's, what I like about a development agreement is, you know what you're getting, we know what you're getting. We can all deal with it without having to worry about any inconsistencies. So let me talk a little bit about that regarding the MDA. Uh, since the MDA of this project was approved years ago, the Utah Supreme Court has. Sort of changed or clarified the law on how development agreements work, and the legislature has also changed the law as well. So the new version of this development agreement takes into account, for the benefit of all parties. Uh, the the changes to development agreement laws from the Conwood Mall case uh and other things. It provides for processes for amendment that weren't clear in the other existing development agreements. It provides for all of those things, it's a template that has been used across the state in a number of jurisdictions to solve those issues. So we're working together to clean up all of those things. There was a question asked in the pre-meeting about what does the county get for this? Uh, I want to be clear that this is, as always, a negotiation, a a trade-off on various things between what the county gets and what the developer gets and what the developer already has. But let me just list a short list of things that the county gets from this, and Charlie has stated some of them, but I want to state, I want to repeat them. The uh, the county gets certainty, they get clarity, they get connectivity, they get a known layout of the existing uh unplanted lots. They get a massive amount of trails, they get open space, they get layouts, they get use limits, they get fairways drive uh in a in a different. Basically for free, uh, they get all kinds of those kinds of goodies. So that's why the developers thinks that the county should, one of the reasons the county should approve it. Uh, on the other hand, the developer also gets certainty, we get to know that we get to build this plant, and that's always a very good thing. Let me talk about a couple of other issues, and I'm gonna skip around a little bit, because I thought it was important to address everything you brought up in the meeting. Uh, the que- there was a question in the pre-meeting about. The rezoning of the property in the finger there, uh, and why it's not in this MDA, it's not in the MDA, the amended MDA, because. We don't own, my clients don't own the property, so therefore those properties can't sign the MDA, so they have to be excluded from it. There was a question about, well, how should the zoning on those properties be handled? Under state law, we can't do anything about those properties, because we don't own those properties, so that's why it will have to come back in the future. The same is true within with the water pond while it's being left out of the MDA, it's because we are not going to own the water pond, so it can't be in the MDA. Uh, so that's why we we can't, we've done it that way. Uh, concerning the um CUP for the utilities. Uh, I would strongly caution you not to do a CUP for the utilities and instead. Put those standards that you need for those utilities in a permitted use. And I say that because I don't want to get any more death threats, because this exact same thing happened. In uh Grand County with CUPs for a utility. And there was a brutal war uh about CUPs and other things in Grand Counties for the utilities. And as a result of those various wars, there were threats of lawsuits, there were death threats, and I'd rather not get death threats anymore, I I know. Uh, to me and to my clients, uh, not from you guys, of course, but I'm talking about people who use. The CUP for the utilities as a way to try to stop a project that that shouldn't happen.
Like, are you saying that we're gonna get death?
No, no, I'm saying I'm getting death, it's another development, I'm assuming, I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about me. Although some of the commissioners in Grand County who voted in favor of the project were were not treated very fairly. No, God, no, I'm sorry, if I made that unclear, I'm not talking about you at all, um, I'm talking about people use CUP. For the utilities as an attempt to shut down the project, and when the county commission had the guts to say, uh, no. Uh, well, actually, the hearing officer said they can't do that, there were a number of threats, and I apologize if I misspoke, Mr. Schuman. I was not implying anything regard, I would say I don't want the death threats, and I don't want them for me. Because we'll be back in asking for a CUP, and some people in the city will try to use that uh as a as a pro- as a hook. To try to stop the development, and that shouldn't happen, so the easy way to make it not happen is to not make it a CUP. Make it a permitted use with the standards that you want, you think are appropriate aesthetically, as Charlie said, screening, safety and those kinds of things. It's a really simple thing to do, uh, so we would ask you to do that and and not keep it as a CUP. That's that recommendation to the county commission, again, I apologize, Mr. Schuman, if I if I sounded inappropriate in that regard, it wasn't my intent whatsoever. Uh, and thank you for so visibly reacting that I that I saw it, because it's just, it's just not clear, so. And I hadn't really seen the CUP issue until pretty much the uh, the staff reported, uh, and then the meeting, the pre-meeting, so that's when I got concerned about it. And I thought it was important that you know that that's a, that could be a significant problem.
Okay, so what you're suggesting is, you're gonna have to have some utility substations, some pumps or whatever.
Yes, sir.
Don't make it a CUP.
Right.
Make it a permitted use.
Yes, sir.
But. Add the conditions.
You're you're exactly correct.
That are coming out of RE twenty anyway.
You're exactly correct.
And then we avoid weaponizing, another thing to shut down the development.
You're exactly one hundred percent, and you stated it better than I did, and I appreciate that, Spur, that's exactly correct. You don't want CUPs weaponized, and that's that's a problem, so I I and I I know how. The county views CUPs, I'm not necessarily sure how the city would view CUPs, and I don't think they should be weaponized. So let me just talk about a couple of other issues. Uh, before I I finish, I'm gonna talk about outsourcing, and then I'm gonna talk about the only area of substance where there is a disagreement. Uh, with staff report, outsourcing, as we know, cities have uh limited resources. Especially when they're starting, we have full faith in the county. If the city is going to outsource to the county, we're happy to put a provision in the development agreement that says if the city's outsourcing to the county. Then that's the outsourcing, we won't outsource to a third party. Uh, but we don't necessarily have faith at the start of a city that they will have the resources. Nor do we uh want, to use your word, Mr. Spur, we don't want inspections and delays to be weaponized. Uh, Charlie was right about the new uh state law requiring much quicker processing to avoid the weaponization. Part of the problem with that is if someone chooses to weaponize inspections. You have to go to court and fight about it, and we'd rather not do that, we'd rather simply comply with the law and have everything done correctly. Again, we trust that the county would do it, but we don't necessarily trust that uh the new city would do it, to be blunt. Uh, so that's why we would ask for the outsourcing to stay, um, I understand this is your recommendation to the county commission. And if you want to make a different recommendation, we completely understand that. Let me talk about the final issue, which is the. And if you want to make a different recommendation, we completely understand that. Let me talk about the final issue, which is the disagreement on the STRs. We do not uh agree with the requirement on the STRs. I will point out that many of the units that we believe will be sold will actually be owner occupied units and not STRs. Uh, but in in terms of internal to the project. We think that a disclosure would take care of any issue internal to the project. External to the project, it's my understanding from code enforcement, that there's been no conditions, there's been no issues. Regarding the existing STRs. So we believe that it's not necessary to limit the STRs and it would be inappropriate to do so. But we recognize that you can make that recommendation to the county commission if you believe it to be correct. You can either recommend uh what Charlie is recommending. Or you could recommend some different version of what Charlie's recommending. And then we'll discuss it at the county commission. Uh, and we appreciate your input. It's, that's what the planning commission is here for, is to give input on those kind of. Uh, planning related issues. And we appreciate your expertise and experience on that. So we're, we're willing to listen and we're willing to discuss it. Uh, right now, we don't think that what Charlie's proposing is uh is acceptable. But we'll have, we're willing to discuss it with the county commission. So that's the short version of of our presentation. Uh, John and Eric and Shane are here to discuss. Any of the substantive issues that that you want. We think this is a conclusion. We think this is a good. Uh, compromise and a good proposal. It works for all of us. It works for all of the parties. You get, they said, more certainty and a whole vast number of benefits. That you wouldn't have gotten under the existing standards. And my clients believe that they get enough benefits to make. Uh, to make it worthwhile as well, to give up the things that, some of the things that they're giving up, like say the fairways drive, for example. Locking in all these ultra high quality, locking in the open space. Changing the connectivity, changing all of those things that that they have a right to do now, but they want to cooperate. With the county and the county staff. And we've worked very carefully with the county and the county staff. And we think that the new project is a much, much, much better project for county. If there's any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them to the extent that I can. And again, Mr. Schuman, I apologize if I scared you about the death threats. It was me, I don't like getting death threats.
Hey, can you clarify for me a little bit this? Why you disagree with the county on the STR? I think the buffer idea.
Yeah, the the simple answer is we don't have that restriction now and STRs. Give you greater flexibility for marketing a project. Uh, and it's a a model that works now and we don't think there's any material downsides. To it. Um, and I know some people disagree with that, but that's our impression, Mr. Burton. We just don't think it's. Uh, we don't think it's uh. An additional ask that the county should make in addition to everything else the county's getting.
How will you internally control the STRs to a limited number?
How would we control the STRs?
In other words, you can have STRs on something, not on all lots.
If the county mandated that.
Well, I think it's limited to what, three hundred and sixty?
Oh, you mean.
I I don't remember the numbers.
Three sixty four.
We got three something less the planted lots now where you can do the STRs.
Uh, uh, our position is that they should all be allowed to do STRs, including the count, the cabins. And the uh, single families as well. That's our position. It shouldn't be limited.
And it would be, and all lots in this whole project would be available to do STRs.
That's our recommendation.
That would increase over what the developer has now.
I I don't necessarily agree that it would increase over what it has now because I believe that the other forty would have logically come in with those same restrictions. But I would acknowledge that it's not a thousand percent clear enough, basically.
So we gotta clarify that some of that.
I I I'm not disagreeing that you can, you can absolutely make a recommendation to the county commission on that. We think the recommendation shouldn't be that they're all STRs. In part because of the administration issue, in part because it's simply uh. Uh, not necessary because the 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 problems in this area regarding STRs, I think, are are more hype than reality. You're not gonna get, in in my opinion, and I know people may disagree, you're not going to get the. South Beach craziness of Miami or something like that with STRs uh in in this valley. That's our opinion.
Do STRs in the cabins uh s- somehow? And I mean, we're talking about cabins, small things, make them affordable. Uh, the word is if things are available for STRs, they cost more than they otherwise would.
You know, the interesting thing is I've seen all kinds of economic debate about that and part of it depends on how many units are actually made available. To the extent that there are more units made available for STRs, then in some arguments, it actually decreases the price. Because the competition for STRs drives the price for the STRs down, which makes the price of the units more affordable. I've seen it. I've seen it argued both ways in a vast number of cities across the country and frankly. Not just across the country, this same debate occurs in Barcelona, in Paris, in London and everywhere else. And no one has a good answer for it, Mr. Burton. As to whether it increases the prices or decreases the prices. There's all, there's, I've seen economic studies both ways.
Okay, if the county were to limit uh create a buffer next to adjoining properties. Uh, is there a better place that you would want the STRs limited other than that buffer?
Uh, that's a good question to which I don't know the answer. Uh, and and that might be an issue for Mr. Lewis. Uh, or Shane or Mr. Householder. I I don't know the answer to it. I can understand the logic of Mr. Ewart. Uh, but our position is that there wouldn't be a buffer because we just don't think it's that much.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Um, I guess the first one, you mentioned that. There that one of the things that the county was getting uncertainty. And as a part of that, you mentioned that the that the. What is actually the developer has is unsure. And you mentioned that you wouldn't want to argue that because.
No, that's not what I, that's, I don't believe I said that. What I said was that I think the developer has very certain rights. I I just don't ever wanna get into an argument. And ambiguity in an agreement always leads to an argument. This is an agreement for both sides, the county and the developer, that is clear. It complies with modern law. I I wasn't implying anyway that the rights of the developer currently, we believe, are very certain. And they're certain in a way that in many ways, the county probably wouldn't appreciate. We have more discretion uh on lots of things than the county would rather us have.
My apologies then, I.
If I misspoke, I apologize.
You should have mentioned, you wouldn't wanna fight that.
No, I I I don't ever wanna litigate. I wanna write a clear contract so that nobody has to litigate.
The other thing you mentioned is that the water pond is not owned by the density or owned by the developer.
Correct.
Which makes me ask the question is, are those additional density rights going to be owned? If you don't own that property, are the property rights owned if you don't own the pond? And, you know, so is it the fourteen or whatever it is?
And that's why I hate to use the word density, because density is an utterly artificial concept, Mr. Schuman. You could build a thousand unit building as tall as the World Trade Center and surrounded by a hundred acres. Uh, and it would have a very low density, but it would be functionally very high density. What we've done, that property was within the bounds of the of the, it was considered always to be for that use. That density that those units were distributed over the remaining piece of the property, those units stay with the property. And they average out to the same density considering that property, even though we don't own that property.
So did the county consider the transfer of development rights from one owner to another?
Uh, I don't believe, I I don't ever wanna get involved in a question of transferable development rights, Mr. Parker. The the simple answer is those development rights existed on the property and they're staying on the on the remaining property.
Charlie, maybe at some point you could clarify that.
If I misspoke, Charlie, you can clarify it.
Happy to. Do you want me to do now?
No, you don't.
That'd be great.
So this was a question that we brought up uh in the beginning of the applicant's discussions with us. At that time, they still owned the property. Um, and then since then, they've needed it over to the uh, uh, the district. Um, it was a, it was a concern we brought up. Uh, if it it gets needed over, do they actually have the right to it? Uh, what they're asking for is because they have beat that over to the community for a community purpose. Um, whereas they didn't have to, they could have potentially reconfigured lots around it in a different way. Um, they're asking for us to consider it as part of the project for the purpose of density, not, you know, for the purpose of applying the development.
So just, just so I mean, I understand, cause like our traditional codes say, you know, say, I don't know what it is. Ten acres, we have three per ten acres, right? And so that would mean you have three, right? That's just original. In this case, now that we're saying it's not. Uh, the question is, if they don't own it, do they get two? Do they get? That's really what curious like.
That it's a question that's totally out of your discretion.
And the reason I I ask is because a lot of this is based on, hey, we're not changing.
Right.
I just want, I I just wanna make sure that's true.
I think if if uh, if you guys don't feel like because they transferred the the pond area before they got their approval from you guys. Uh, or from the county commission, if you feel like those rights that are inside that area don't exist. Then I would recommend passing that recommendation over to the county commission.
What is the county? What is your recommendation on that?
When we started this, we looked at it as if it was part of the project and I just, I haven't pushed back any further after that. I did mention the applicant that it could be a concern um from public, concerning the planning commission as they go through the process and so.
Cause I guess the concern would be, so if we're not changing the number of, you know, density, right? That's what's been, that's kind of what's been said a lot, right? Changing it. This was always planned to be a pond, so at least so many would have been built. I guess they could have moved it over, but.
Yeah, so if if the owners still, if the applicants still owned the needed area. Um, they would be able to cluster all of their rights outside of that area. And so it's a, it's a chicken and egg that they. They represented to us that they felt like it was a, it was a community giving that they gave to the community. Um, as opposed to just holding that back so they can keep whatever it is the rights applied with. They're just asking that for anything that exists and. Um, will never be part of that pond. And so they're asking us to put it um in a different spot. If that's something you guys aren't comfortable with, then the three is. I haven't done that math yet, but I can sit down and do it.
And we should know that.
Okay, I'll get it for you, uh, five of you, but you know me.
I think Charlie said roughly the same thing I did. That's really not counting the GBR, it's saying the project is the project. And that's how it works. We're not changing the zoning in any effective way. We're not changing the number of units in any effective way. So nothing has changed except that the pond is now a community benefit for everyone else and we'll keep the same amount of units. So I'm, I'm not sure anything else is.
I guess the question, one of the concerns is, so the pond, does it need to become, does it need to have a development, right? Is that, I mean, cause. Well, they could change hands at some point. Does it, I don't know, but it's part of the the ability to transfer. Area, cause we haven't created that. So that's the question, right? So now we've created this area that, you know. It's possible they could move the pond somewhere else and then have property that nobody can build on. Just, just trying to clarify.
It's it's a decent question. I I've had that come up with schools, for example, Mr. Schuman, where you put a school on a property and. The the simple answer is the ultimate zoning of this property would be within the control of the jurisdiction if it's not used in some future. Imaginable, like as anything is possible. If it's not used as a detention bond at some time in the future. Then somebody could always come in and ask for uh anything, have a zone changed. And the answer is sort of like. You know, just turn the TV off and say no. And it's designed for that. We certainly would have no objection to having. A restriction on the pond as a use for a pond and not for anything else, but it's uh. Not part of the development, I can't put it in.
Could you clarify the community benefit? Because I thought I already said it's going to have a fence around it to keep it loud.
It's a, it's a common detention pond for the use of the water service for everybody in here. That's what I'm.
From everybody who buys water from that water district.
Correct.
So it's not really public service, they're selling water.
True, but it's still a community.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
No, no, you're, you're exactly right. We're not using it as a soccer field. It just doesn't work that way. Anything else? If you have any questions about the design itself. Uh, or any design questions than John is here to talk about. I I do wanna emphasize upon the STRs that. There have not been, to our knowledge, any complaints about the existing STRs. Uh, and those, you have ordinances regulating noise. You have ordinances regulating uh all of those other things that would normally. Be associated with a secondary adverse effect from an STR. So you're not giving up on any of those. Uh, ordinances. By that, I mean if I, if I own the house myself. Uh, I could do anything up until ten o'clock and then I can't do anything at ten oh one. It's noisier, for example. The same thing applies to a single family house as applies to an STR. All of those nuisance style ordinances. Apply to both. So we don't think that regulating the STR ability of those lots. Uh, makes, uh, should be a condition. But you can make that as a recommendation if you want to the county commission. We understand that you're a recommending body. You could, you could recommend a no. I mean, we hope you don't. We would like to be working as cooperatively with the the planning commission as we have with the staff. I think we've had a really good working relationship with the staff and we appreciate all of your.
So, and you, I don't know this right term, additional STRs you're proposing over what Charlie is recommending. Are the rights that came out of the pond?
Not out of the pond, it came out of the forty acres.
Okay.
So I think Charlie recommended some additional cutback back beyond that.
Yeah, Charlie recommended two levels of cutbacks. One is on the STRs, uh, on the the single family units and also on the cabins as well. He's recommending two different versions.
Thank you, Charlie. Correct me, you you did take into account the pond area. But then. After you took that into account, then you said cutback. I mean, there's two other ways. The the one way was on the perimeter and the other way was the cabins. So you gave them some additional and then you were recommending two areas of.
Yeah, so uh, the density calculations in the Stafford Board, they don't reduce the area of the pond. Um, and so. It wouldn't, but the area of the pond, those thirteen development rights wouldn't have been part of the calculation anyway, using my recommendation. Cause you're only sticking to the original three sixty four that was approved with the BRUD. Uh, and just to quick answer the question, uh, D to pond area, fourteen point four four acres. Uh, that's just under five development rights, so it's four development rights.
Alright, so I think at this juncture, why don't we consider a motion to uh.
And it might be for John, but the question, so so we talk about these conditional use permits and the the uses. You know, and you talked in there about how hiring an outside company, right? That's what we call, we're outsourcing, outsourcing. Um, we got about twelve months before the signal takes place. Why, why would we need that in place? But why not? Why, why can't we, why can't we keep the county rules that they have and they control whether or not they also use or not? I mean, like, we got twelve months to submit, but we have good, why, 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 why do we need to? Why would we need to try and, you know, recommend that the, you could make changes then when. Maybe ten months that you could give this.
If I can answer it very simply, Mr. Schuman, we trust the county a lot.
There's ten months.
I I understand that, but after twelve, ten. I understand that, but after 12, 10 months, then there's an eternity. And without finishing the second half of the sentence, I will say we trust the county a lot. And we would like to have that trust preserved in the form of a document. Eric said that if the county is the outsourcing vehicle. We would be happy to put in a provision, as I said, in the development. It says if the city outsources to the county, then we will waive any other outsourcing rights that we have. If if you guys are doing it, that's why I I guess I'm probably subtle, maybe I'm not known for subtlety. We have great faith in the county. We're not going to be weaponized as long as the county is running the inspections, the permitting process. The development, we have no issue with the county. I don't think I can be any clearer.
John Lewis, I'm sorry, Mr. Schuman, I just, I wanted to, I don't think that was quite what you're asking. So the way I I think I hear you ask is, well, we've got 10, 12 more months. Why do we need to change a thing now? So I totally get that. And that was one of our recommendations, Charlie. Maybe we put something in that says between now and then, we just stick to, you know, the county's current way of doing things. But once it gets turned over to the new city, we'd like these rules to apply. Because we just don't know how that first two years is going to go. It's going to be probably chaotic. So it's maybe your recommendation is, yeah, we want to see things stay the same until then. That's perfectly fine. Because we are big fans of the county. Thank you.
Okay, this is your, can I ask you a question?
This is probably for Charlie, just in the very first part of his application request. His application request. And the last part of the last sentence is, I mean, we're combining these zones, we're making them one zone to provide better assurance to the community that established historic development rights are limited. What does that mean?
It's it's kind of like the example I gave in the Stafford Board. Let's just take Nordic Valley, for example. There's that three and a half to four acre parcel in Nordic Valley that had a development agreement that restricted the development rights on that property to, I don't know, 16 units or something like that. Where in on that four or five acres, they could have only gotten 70 or 80. When the developers started pushing back on the restriction that was applied, historic restriction from the past. Started pushing back saying, hey, our legal interpretation is this. And we started putting some legal mind to it as well. We realized we didn't have the right language in that, those documents that limited the density the way that we had thought we did. And so what that means is that some point in the future, the property will fall out of the development agreement. Because the development agreement is going to have an expiration date on it. If the applicant isn't done developing at that point. It's better to have an underlying zone that is more closely aligned with the amount of density that is the given in the development agreement. That way, in the future, you still know how many density rights or how much development is going to be coming in that area.
Okay, so this language is intended to comfort the community that nothing beyond what's being discussed here will ever happen.
That's my intention, is to make sure that the community understands that even though you see FR3, which allows higher density apartments. You're not going to get those. You're going to get a very limited amount of density out of this even after, what are we? I think we determine 20 or 30 years, even after that time expires.
Okay, final question for you on STRs. They're suggesting they would like every any lot in this development to be STR qualified. And you're suggesting, I think, that they're not entitled to the whole amount? Can you explain the difference between their request for everything and what you're recommending?
The way I see it, and there may be room for debate, the way I see it, the development agreement itself. The 2013 clarifying agreement and the 2000 development agreement for the Wolf Creek development did not have anything about STRs in it. It wasn't specific about STRs. The thing that gave the tool or the driver that gave the applicant the right to do STRs was the PRUD conditional use permit that was approved in 2015. And because that PRUD conditional use permit was only for 364 units. I think the amount of STRs that they're entitled to today, so say, say the county says no to the rezone, no to the overlay zone. They're still entitled to do 364. If they came back for the other, the 49, whatever it is. They came back for the other 49 later, I I think we have pretty good standing to push back and say, hey, this wasn't part of the STR approval originally.
And what is their response to that argument?
It's favorable, I think.
I I've glad you asked. For sure. Well, first of all, you know, our take on it is we were granted a project with X amount of density. And we elected to only place some of it at the time, knowing we would have to place the rest of it later. Our interpretation is that project has long term or short term rental capability. And, you know, going forward and trying to master plan the entire area, we've been very cognizant of there are appropriate places to put short term rentals. They're not all legal. And where you do put them, you've got to have really good rules in your in your CCNRs. But there's definitely places elsewhere where they're not appropriate. We don't really need a whole bunch more. So when we came before you guys and got right next door to an Eagle Crest approved, we took out short term rentals. Just being a long term for, you know, more affordable and better suits for good reasons. Cobay Ranch, you know, was limited to weekly or three days or whatever to match up with the other one. So, you know, we've we've gone to great, great lengths to try to be particular about where we're going to put short term rentals. And bridges has always been that, and we just assume that it always will be. I also think from a practicality point of view, if you say these houses over here can have rentals and those houses over there can't, that is a nightmare to try to figure out how to police. And, you know, we go away someday and how are they going to police it? And it just it just is more appropriate to say, this community has it and this community doesn't. And so you go to Fairway, you go to, you know, Eagle Crest or Eagle Ridge, those are places that we've taken out that nightly rental. But bridges is that, and that's what people who live there expect. And and, you know, we specifically called Iris at the code enforcement, said, has anyone ever called in and complained about rentals here? She said no. So I don't I don't think we have an issue because we have really good CCNRs. You know, a lot of the issues happen where they don't have CCNRs or where they're just typical neighborhoods that had no idea that rentals were coming and, you know, so they don't have parking figured out. They don't have rules. They don't have teeth in their CCNRs that can enforce things that can be due. So that's kind of our take on it.
Any idea what the bonus is? Do you sell a lot with or without?
No idea.
Thanks.
Charlie, I think they mentioned like the previous gentleman mentioned that that this rezone request, the county proposed this.
The underlying zone, so.
Claire, can we clarify my question? The county asked for, did he say that the county asked for it? Or is it that the applicant is asking for the zone that was just advised by the county that this is the.
Great question. The applicant has been advised by the county to use this zone. The applicant has agreed to do so with hesitation, I would say, and not to speak for the applicant. But the big concern originally was we don't want this to look like it's more than it is in terms of complication. Therefore, let's just apply an overlay zone and just forget about what the underlying zone says. And and I kind of pushed pretty hard on that, saying, I think we just need to consolidate. That'll make me feel a lot more comfortable from an administrative perspective, hopefully the new city feel a lot comfortable from an administrative perspective, too.
So that, so just so I understand, then the county said use the zone, the applicant is asking for a development agreement? That's where this started?
Yeah, the applicant is asking for the MPD overlay zone to overlay. If if they kept the four zones, to overlay the whole thing and through the MPD overlay zone, that's where the development agreement has teeth. Other questions?
So I ask Corbin, anybody who walked in here, who trumps? Is it the zone or the overlay zone? It's the overlay. So it's a matter of the underlying zone is, whatever the overlay is, that's what counts.
Correct. If there's an overlay zone placed over it, then if there is anything specific outlined in that, then that would trump the base zone standard. That would be what would govern. The base zone standard would not govern in that situation.
So what I'm hearing is the applicant is just happy if they could get this overlay zone and leave the underlying zoning where it is. And the county is, well, we'd like it to be all the same zone, so you got to go through this reasonable thing.
And they'd still have to go through the, well, for the overlays, you know, overlaying.
It's the exact same, that's right. It's the exact same process. It's just a color on a map is the difference. And clarification for the future. That's why we didn't feel like it was a big risk. But I did mention the applicant. It did become a challenger to planning commission. We we'd suggest you.
Well, same way, the end result is the same for uses.
It is so long as the development agreement is in play.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is the current pond a part of the master or the overlay?
No, and I probably should clarify, the the image that I gave you back here. I didn't even think about it when I was putting this image together. There should be a 40 acre pond that's still RE15 right in this space here. So it won't be part of the overlay. It won't be part of the development agreement. It won't be part of the rezone. Because it's not on the button.
So current, go to the previous one. So the only the RE15 currently has the PRUD, right? Like only the outside, is that right? Or is the FB3 zone have the PRUD or the overlay?
Gotcha. FB3 doesn't have anything tied to, are you talking about the original Wolf Creek approval? Or are you talking about today's or so?
I think so. I know that the proposed one is that it would. I'm talking about the original.
So my understanding is there is no development agreement on that 40 acre piece, the FB3 piece. FR3, there is that original development agreement from the year 2000, also clarified in 2015. I have not traced the legal description of the conditional experiment of the PRUD. But I do know if you zoom into some of these areas, you're you got some lots that are very close, if not, some lots right in here that are in the FR3 zone. So I do know it is overlapping to some degree already as it stands.
Okay, so if the commission recommended we don't do the RE20, we just do the overlay. What does the county lose by that?
Potentially, theoretically, the county loses a little bit of clarity on what can and cannot happen. Now, today, we know that the development agreement says this is what can and cannot happen. But 20 or 30 years from now, when the development agreement expires, that's a different story. And so if you just change it to the RE20, essentially, just consolidate it, you've got a backup plan for what happens when the development agreement expires. Not just expires, but the applicant has the right written into the proposed development agreement to not do the development to cancel. And if that gets canceled, we want to have a backup plan.
I'm sure that was looking at this as well. He was looking at how it would apply to the new city. And it would just make it easier for them to understand. But you can leave it how it is. It's just going to be harder for them to understand.
Okay, so I'd like to ask the applicant, what does the applicant lose if we do the county's recommendation?
I I think we just agree with Charlie that it's better, it cleans it up. I mean, the development agreement of the master overlay does trump everything, so that really is what governs. But again, that can disappear by day tomorrow and they sell it all off and somebody else comes in and buys it. Now you've got FR3 or, you know, high density land that suddenly is in question. Did you go with that density or you're going with the developer group that just died? So, you know, there are certain situations he's trying to avoid, you know, in the future that could happen or possible happening. So it's not a bad idea. The the other thing that's currently goofy is you've got four different zones. And some of those lines go right between houses. So does that house fall under the rules of FB3 or RE15 or RE20? And they have slightly different uses. I can have a home occupation job here, but not here. And so it is messy. So I I understand he wanted to do it all under one thing. I initially fought that because I didn't want to come before anybody and say the word rezone. That's never a good thing. But, you know, I think it's a cleaner way of doing it. And, you know, I think anything you do to take ambiguity out of the situation is better. So I agree with Charlie that it's hard, but it's a better thing to just clean it up.
Okay, so it sounds like your recommendation now is, did the RE20 clean it up?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, yeah.
Okay, so if we have a motion, a second, I'm making it contain going to the public hearing.
Motion to enter a public hearing.
All in favor? So if anyone here in the room wants to come forward and make remarks, please do so. State your name and address and keep your remarks short to the number two. Thank you.
Vicki Dips, I live at 4488 North 4150 East. We are in Sheep Creek and back up to the proposed area very closely. And I would just like to consider his short term rentals. Making the cabins short term rentals is perhaps less frustrating to existing people because they're back. You can't see them from our subdivision. There's a gentle rise and so they're they're back away. Making the entire project short term rentals is frightening. And I think it's fair and fair to the subdivision. We've lived there for 20 years. And I I think that would be very disruptive. There's a lot less control on short term rentals, the types of people, the things going on. People taking care of their properties. It's a different bargaining. And so I would like you to consider that if there need to be short term rentals, that they're not budding up against existing properties.
Any others?
Hi, Don Sutonic from Eden. And I'd like to know if if the existing CCNRs that are associated with the master agreement would continue. Is there, is there any effect, I guess, what I'm asking? If you were to approve the RE20. Does that in any way change or jeopardize our protection under that master agreement?
We're not going to answer that right now. We may 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 hear an answer.
Okay.
But we're not going to address this.
Yeah, I appreciate just knowing what what the answer to that question is. Thank you.
I'm 3597 North, I'm in Eden. At the beginning of the meeting, you mentioned that this was an acre approval, not approval, but no table is is allowed. Could you explain that?
We typically address questions at the very end.
You, you ask your questions from the public hearing and we answer them.
So you do not go against point.
I, I will if the commissioners are okay with that.
Thank you. I'm not here to address the pros and the cons of the development. But what I do want to express is my concerns and the concerns of another, number of other people, that we have a year to get our city up and running. And we're in the process of doing that as moving ahead forward. But that should not mean that Weber County has one more year to hurry through whatever zoning and community changes they want to make now. When the vote was taken, the vote was approved to become a city, it didn't create a land right for developers to cement what they're doing before the city takes, takes, goes into effect. The city is, the city represents the desires of the citizens itself. So any, any permanent action that is proposed to Naugent Valley should not be finalized until our city is officially, officially formed and functioning. It's a gray area and I'm sure there's some legal basis to it that's going on here. But in the year, we're going to be in, be a, going to be a city. And what you're doing here now is imposing a friendly county, very friendly county, and desires and plans onto a city that may or may not got those plans for the future. And that's, that's why I'm here. That's what I want to say. And we need, we would like to see this process slowed down. So we have a city to, to create a city when it comes. Thank you.
Okay, do we have anyone online that would like to make a comment? I think I see Han Bao Chan.
Um, okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Jan Fulmer, Eden, Utah. Just a couple of things. I think commissioners, you know, I have a pretty extensive valley email distribution list and I was really late getting this announcement out because there were a bit of confusion. There were like four different versions of the meeting announcement that came out. And it was very difficult to weed through everything because I want to make sure it's correct when I send it out, you know, to approximately 2,000 email addresses. But a question that I have first of all is I've looked at a lot of numbers, Charlie. But when you guys decide if you answer questions, can you please tell me what the total number of development units are in the bridges, including where the homes or where the, the lots have been platted? Okay? But I have to disagree with the comments made about STRs. We have real issues in the valley, especially when those STR units are by residential family homes. We won't go into the naked people that have been around or we won't really go into the motorized vehicles going on the walking trails that are maintained by individual HOAs. It has been not good. The development that I'm in, our HOA had to shell out money because there were motorized vehicles. They tore up the walking trails. All right? The glamping cabins, I think it's a far reach to say that that is some form of affordable housing when you look at some really wonderful plans that have been put in place for affordable housing in Western Weber County. I have to give credit to Weber County planning and those developers in the unincorporated area in Western Weber County. There've been some really great plans put forth to provide affordable housing. Also, Charlie, if I heard correctly, the master overlay zoning allows for commercial? Well, guess what? That area is not designated as a commercial area in the general plan. So if for any reason this is approved, that has to be taken out of there and not allowed any commercial development because I could see the potential for storage units going in there. All right? And you know, Charlie, there's been a great debate on storage units period by residential areas. If it is, if they exit from the 2002 development agreement, then does that mean they also exit from the Wolf Creek Master Association? That is a whole development that is subject to the CCNRs of the Wolf Creek Master Association. You, and, and I think you know what I mean, Charlie. It's a, a master HOA over all of the different areas. So it's not clear if they exit from that 2002 development agreement, does that also imply they exit from the Master Homeowner Association? Also, if I understand correctly, if this master overlay goes in, I couldn't pick up what everybody was saying on TDRs. But it sounds like there would be not as many TDRs used. If that is the case, do they plan to transfer those TDRs out of the Wolf Creek Resort area? That is a definite question that I think needs to be answered. But those, that's it. Those are my comments.
Okay, do we have anyone else with a comment online? Hearing done, seeing done, then I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Sir, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Yeah, so what about right now amongst the commissioners, why don't we just have a conversation?
Charlie, on the pond and the development rights with the pond. So I guess take us back, take me back to saying that they haven't sold the pond. Is it within, and I guess the part, the question I, I will get to it. If they hadn't sold, they own the whole thing and they said, hey, we're gonna cluster over in the corner. And they do that when the pond's gonna be sold and build them? Because it's not really open space anymore, which is the intention of clustering, when it's like a closed-in, you know, not open.
Yeah. The Cluster Subdivision Code as well as the PRUD ordinance, we discussed a little bit about how clustering should work. If they develop the property under, wholly under their control and later sold the pond to a different entity, the Cluster Subdivision ordinance would allow that to happen because individually owned open space parcels are allowed. But a open space conservation easement would be applied to the property. So if that future owner does decide to something different, the county owns the conservation easement on it. So a little bit more assurance that if they drain the pond, they're not gonna be able to build houses in there.
Can they build the fence?
Yes.
Which is something like a closed.
Yeah, people, well, so it's, as far as I understand, they're gonna do a chain link fence. Chain link vinyl coated black or whatever it is. I think that's coming from, from, from another source. And so I didn't get that directly from the district. But if it is a chain link fence, then it's not closed in. However, our Cluster Subdivision ordinance, nor the rest of our code governs whether fence, you know, the style of fence, what it can be, except for a variety of user instances. This would be one of them. So then, yes, they could put a fence up, a solid fence or a chain fence or a barbed wire fence of any kind.
There was talk that Fairway Drive was part of this. Now, I understand that, that I had heard that developers agreed to build Fairway Drive through. And some part, is that associated with this development?
So this development agreement, as opposed to what they currently have rights to, what they currently have rights to, doesn't even include any part of fairways. The way you have in front of you will require them to build Fairways Drive where Fairways touches their property. So. Sorry, let me get the screen back up again. So fairways is essentially this red line right here. And this is where the property touches fairways. The expectation of development agreement is that they build Fairways Drive right there, including a multi-use paved pathway.
Is that under the new like this?
Different post.
Previous? Because under the previous, wouldn't that have to be done as well?
Previous agreement doesn't specify anything about fairways.
But like when you go and build the subdivision, is that normal?
We oftentimes try. One of the challenges we have with this one is they've already developed a lot of that adjacent to. And so there is, there could be potential for them to come back. They were not actually developing adjacent to fairways anymore. We're developing over here. And if they are developing over there, not adjacent to fairways, then it, it's a lot harder for the county to require them to improve a street that isn't immediately adjacent to the property.
Is there a previous, is there some agreement in place to build it all the way up to the current road?
The county, so no agreement. The county has funding from Waco. Waco has, has designated funding to build from, well, to finish the whole road, regardless of whether or not the applicant doesn't. We're asking the applicant to do another heavy lift to, to avoid a chunk of that being spent and that's out of taxpayer dollars.
As part of this, because that would be clear.
As part, yes, the applicant doing that as part of this project. And then the Waco money would take care of the rest if the applicant doesn't fund or invade the rest himself. And keeping in mind that through this RE20 portion here, the county has another development agreement, another development that has already been approved. And so that portion of Fairways Drive would very likely be built by the applicant for, for the purpose of that development. Does that make sense? So sorry, right through here. Actually, I think you can see the kind of shadow right there. That's Fairways Drive as it goes down to connect with 4100. This is the eagle crossing, eagle landing, I can't remember one of the eagles. That the applicant got a development agreement a couple, one, two years ago to develop. And so with that in mind, if the applicant develops before the county spends Waco dollars and before the county does this on her own, then the applicant wouldn't be required to do anything there. It would just be paid for and funded by public dollars. But what we're working on with the applicant is possibly preserving the ability or the right requirement for the applicant to build most of that fairways connection. Now, if the county waited five years, didn't spend any five dollars and the applicant came in next year and wanted to develop this, we would expect fairways to be built by the applicant. So it's just a tiny question.
Is there any history or tradition, I guess, of having like this, the development agreement where it's basically non-transferable?
Like, has that happened before?
And does the county do that? So for example, we do this and then we say, it's non-transferable. We don't, we don't make the same terms, but just everyone knows, so you can.
We, no, that's a great question.
Typical thing? Is that a not typical thing?
It depends. It depends on what it is that we're getting. So in Western Weber County, there is a large 550 acre property going in, doing a variety of different uses. And the planning commission and the county commission both were okay with that applicant doing it. But concerned about the commitments that that applicant is making going to some of the same goals, ideas, visions for their property. And so in that development agreement, we are putting some mechanisms in that would essentially require that, that agreement to run with the owner as opposed to just the land. So it'll run with the land, but it expires, potentially expires. It's not a done deal yet. So it could potentially expire if the property is sold.
Is that something you think would be applicable or something that would work here?
It's something you can ask for. What I do know is that we did have a lot of discussions with the applicant about that section of the development agreement. Yeah, I think it's called assignability. If you look through the agreement, it's usually near the back. And we did have some great, specific discussions about what is in that assignability portion. My understanding is this project, the applicant is likely to do most if not all of it. But other projects, assignability will become a challenge if, if other projects come forward on the property. So I'm not sure that I'm worried about it here, but if you are worried about it, if you want this development agreement to run with this landowner, we could certainly put that in recommendation to the county commission. Just keep in mind, if this landowner sells, because we can't stop them from selling, then that means the development agreement no longer runs with land, it runs with the landowner. And then, then what do we have? Well, if we rezone with the RE20, we've got something that we can stick our, even though we got teeth in. But it just adds a little bit of unknowns to the process. My recommendation would be to, regardless of who the developer is, have this development agreement run with the land. Have it be very clear and specific about what it is that we're expecting. So even if the applicant offloads it or chunks it out to some developers, it's very clear. Runs with the land and all of the future developers will have to do the same thing that this applicant is proposing. And potentially get it approved, getting it out of the square.
So is there a problem with having it run with the land?
Not in my opinion. Again, like I mentioned before, the business of setting expectations. And if you set good expectations, clear expectations through your agreements, the next owner who picks up the property, who does their due diligence, will know that they're picking up the property to finish what this applicant started. So it gives us a sense of assurance, the county, the, the public, the future city, that this is what's going to happen regardless of who owns the property.
What are you talking about? If it's done objectively, if the development agreement is objective, then it runs with the land? Otherwise, it's subjective. Now we're in ambiguity land.
Yeah.
We also gotta consider, I mean, I'm awful restrained on alienation. There's a possible problem here if it doesn't run with the land.
Yeah. Yeah. The other thing to consider as you're looking at that assignability section of the development agreement, the applicant has the right through the development agreement to sell portions of the property to a sub-developer. But one thing that I'm pretty passionate about when I, when I negotiate development agreements is that the applicant maintains control over getting things done, that, that sub-developer getting things done the right way. And so the applicant will be the master developer, will maintain his right as the master developer. So we would look to him to make sure those sub-developers are, are honoring what's in that development agreement as well as we've got our own enforcement abilities as well against the sub-developers. Otherwise, so it, it's nice because it does put a master developer umbrella and kind of trials and brightens all the sub-developers if a sub-developer comes in.
The, if, so say it's assignable or it's not assignable. And, and it doesn't go with the property, it's just the developer. And then, but we do change it to RE20? Does the overlay apply as well?
That's a good question. It's actually one I didn't think about until Jan was asking some other questions. Will the overlay expire with the development agreement? We haven't written it that way, but it's probably a good idea too because the, I could actually answer part of your questions to the MPD overlay zone, which does have some allows for commercial. It, those specifics of the MPD overlay zone, they only apply to the property if they're denunciated in the development agreement. It's not just carte blanche, any commercial activity can happen on the property, storage units or whatever. So it's essentially, the MPD overlay zone is essentially a framework of things that can be applied to the property through a development agreement. So I think my recommendation would be ultimately to the county commissioners as well as you guys, that the MPD overlay zone has expiration with the development agreement. So if one expires, the other does.
Would you be opposed to saying it's assignable just to this?
No, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to really anything you guys want.
So would be your recommendation.
I wouldn't be. I would, I would want to defer to the applicant though to see what their take is. I know, you know, target for good future. If I were in the applicant's shoes, I wouldn't want it, but. If I were in the applicant's shoes, I wouldn't want it, but from a policy perspective from our side, I don't, I don't think that it would bother me if it was part of the development.
I'm a little bit concerned about the idea of the objectivity and the subjectivity. If the county is served by kind of consolidating this into one zone and having predictability for everybody, but then you say, well, it can only go to this developer, it can't, it doesn't run with the land. Well, there goes predictability out the window. So what do we gain by that?
The idea, at least my idea, is, look, you know, there's, there's talk of the, the city, right? Having maybe a new vision or maybe assuming that the people have a new vision. Well, that doesn't mean that we can stop them. I guess I'll explain, I mean, I guess it doesn't mean we can take away rights from somebody who has rights. But then we go, okay, well, instead of, you know, to kind of appease both sides, it's like, well, look, you can make a new deal. You know, that's my idea, or that's what I'm getting at. It's not necessarily, yeah, it's different, but hey, you're gonna have a new county, city, and government. You want to make a new deal, you can make a new deal, but the old one stands. It's kind of what I'm getting at with this.
Well, predictability would be, the new city takes over in a year. A year will have a new city. They decide what they want to do going forward. They can't decide going backwards. But the county's in charge now. Landowners have a right to come before the county and say, hey, you're in charge now. I won't make a deal today.
And my, my thoughts are, and maybe I'm wrong in this, is that, yeah, you make a deal with what you're proposing, but you know, if you change it, the new, the deal has to be rewritten. It's kind of the idea.
But the change is not anything to do with the property other than whose name is on the deed. It has nothing to do with the development. If the county says, okay.
If the developer's really planning to build this, does that matter?
Well, objectively, if this is what we're gonna get, this is our bargain. And what we're gonna get looks like this, we don't care who gives it to us. This is what it's gonna look like. And anybody that's gonna work on this property has to follow this template, has to.
But then that means we'd have to get really, like you mentioned, objective, specific versus saying, you know, this is where it is.
That's where the development agreement comes in.
We know the development agreement's already specific. It supersedes all of the rules that we will put in any other place.
Well, the backup is RE twenty rules. I think that's what Corbin's telling us. RE twenty controls unless it is superseded by the development agreement.
Right, if it is reasoned to RE twenty, then that would be the baseline for anything that's not governed by the master plan.
Development agreement. So it's not like we don't, we don't have to put everything in the master plan. The master, the overlay zone, the overlay zone gives details that supersede what's in RE twenty. But if it's not in the master development agreement, the overlay, then RE twenty controls. So it's not, we don't have to put every detail in the overlay because most of the details are already in RE twenty. And it just makes good common sense to me. Okay, we're gonna prove this same, it ought to be good for, here's what we're gonna get, it's in this box. We don't care who hands us the box, but the box has got to be as defined in the overlay, the development agreement. The overlay is on in RE twenty.
So the other, the other reason I think that where I thought this through is the, you know, this, this is coming from twenty years ago. This, this, this plan is kind of where it's coming to fruition today. And we're, we're, you know, it was the talk of certainty. Do you remember that? They're, you know, fighting because nobody knows, we're not sure what's what, we're trying to set that. So that's where I say, well, great, we'll set the certainty in this deal, and the next one, let them work that out. You know, that's my, let the new city work that out, and if you change ownership, let them work that out. Why, why do we need to set, you know, for example, let me see, let me see if I can get where I'm going with this. So say, okay, so let's play out the, you, we approve this, it goes through, then they sell it to someone else and they go, geez, like, there, there is in the code when this was approved in the master overlay that there could be more density rights than what they actually plotted. And I don't actually have to build the plant that says I have to build a trail, but I can make some shortcuts here or there because it's not that specific. Then you're stuck with it where here, we, we kind of have an understanding that, hey, you're gonna build this, you're gonna do that. What's the?
Well, the understanding has to be what's in writing. If the trail is in writing and it's in that development agreement, it has to be there. And a future owner might come along and say, well, I don't want to do a trail. That's a bad idea. They go, well, you're stuck. You have no choice unless you can make a new deal with us. You gotta deal with the city or whomever is in charge at that point. So we should be living in an objective world here, not a subjective one.
Let me try and add a little bit of substance to this conversation. I'm in the assignability section of the development agreement, which is, if you want to look at it yourselves, on page twenty one. Rights and responsibilities of master developer under this MPD may be assigned in whole or in part by master developer with the consent of the county as provided herein. So they have, they have agreed to allow the county, and if this, when this goes into the city that just replaced county to the city, the ability to weigh in on whether or not a transfer can happen. Sell lots, basically saying, we agree that if they sell lots, that doesn't count as assignability. We agree that if they transfer the property to a related entity that's related to them, just they make a different, well, see, whatever, that's not a transfer. And then we agree that the master developer will give us notice within a certain period of time after the transfer or before the transfer happens, and then give us time to object. So unless the county objects in writing with ten business days of notice, the county shall be deemed to have approved of and consented to the assignment. Actually, thinking the, my comments back to the applicant, I wanted that ten business days to be changed to twenty. If you've got a small city and the only administrator in that city is on vacation for ten days, then that could get a little hard if it's just, if the notice is just sitting in the mail, waiting. So, and then we get down into partial assignment. The master developer can assign out parts of the development to sub-developers. Master developer holds the full right to change this development agreement even after in parts of the property needs to sign out to sub-developers. So that means only this master developer has the right to petition the county to change this contract or petition the future city to change this contract. All the sub-developers that they sell parts of or assign parts of the property out to, they have no authority to engage in renegotiation with the county for this contract. That gives the county quite a bit of control and latitude over expectations.
Are you saying that's, what you're saying is what you think's contained in twenty twenty five?
Are you saying it's not? The version that we were looking at has like different state in there. So that's, that's worthwhile to look at before county commissioners make any final decision on that. Our request is that the master developer stay in charge of that.
What this says is, if he assigns part of this property, then the S and E has to perform all the obligations attached to the property.
It does.
But the master guy is released from it.
Okay, that's what this says.
Okay.
Our request was to make sure the master developer has accountability through the whole thing. So there's a little bit of negotiation, I think, still left to do on that. Twenty point six, this is the one that has the meat and potatoes. The county may only withhold its consent if the county is not reasonably satisfied of the assigning's financial abilities and perform the obligations a master developer proposed to be assigned or there is an existing breach of a development obligation owed to the county by the proposed assignee or related entity that has not either been incurred or been processed or been incurred in a manner acceptable to the county. County may also deny any proposed assignment if the proposed assignee has documented a record of failing to perform on any other development projects in the county or elsewhere. So, I mean, we could ask some references if we needed to.
Yeah, kind of thing.
Yeah, it works. Any other questions on that point?
So at this point, why don't, before we finalize any discussion up here, Rick, if you have any clarifying comments, summary comments, things you've heard that you want to comment on?
Just the one on Mr. Walton. He had some questions about the review process. And you may recall back in December, there were some noticing issues, so it was pushed to this meeting. And at that time, there's a provision in state code that the developer, if he feels like there's been some unreasonable delay with the review process, that he can require it to be, a decision to be made by the planning commission. And so that's what the applicants chose to do. And so that's why you have an option to either approve or to deny that tonight. And that applies to any municipality throughout the state of Utah because of state code.
So is there any further or different discussion amongst commissioners on any particular thing that you've heard from Charlie or anyone else, or your own thoughts at this point?
I'd like to ask Rick if there's any history of issues with STRs that applicant indicated that there isn't.
The applicant is correct. We have not had very many issues at all, not, none of this area, but throughout. If, you know, Ms. Fulmer had indicated that there was some work, they just haven't been reported. When they have, Iris and the third-party entity, GOOS, has taken care of those.
What does that exactly mean?
I think, if I heard you, sorry to interrupt. I think you're referencing in the area, not across the whole valley. I'm referencing in this specific area. We haven't had any, but throughout, any issues that have come up, they've been addressed very timely. The ordinance requires that if it's reported to GOOS, that they're, they have to contact the owner within, I'm trying to remember the ordinance, thinking it was like within six hours. And then they have, and they've taken care of those things. So from what I've heard and what's been reported to me from code enforcement is that those things have been addressed throughout the entire valley. Did that answer your question?
Well, I'm trying to understand what the comment Ms. Fulmer made that when, when the comment by the applicant is that there hasn't been any issues and she indicates otherwise, I'd like to understand what the county has to say about the other ones.
Otherwise, if they're reported to us, then we go out and take care of those. And so anything that has.
What does that, what does that mean? You take, the county takes care, what does taking care of those mean?
So if there's a violation, they have like within six hours or so, they have to take care of those things. And what else, there can be fines imposed upon them.
So does that mean we're gonna contact Mr. Lewis and say, hey, they're streaking down the road?
If that's who's applied on the business license, there's a contact information and number that's on the business license, and GOOS contacts who's on the business license if someone calls in after hours. And then we go and take care of that. I'm not sure if that's answering your question.
I'm not sure you can give me a better answer, but thank you.
Yeah, all I can go by is what's been reported internally. And GOOS keeps track of those things and.
Is there a consequence?
There is.
Can we take away the STR or if there's a reported violation?
We start with fines and it's basically the amount that they're paying for that. It is the first offense and then it goes up from there. And then they have to pay those fines.
They can get to the level where the STR is revoked and that owner cannot reapply. They can sell the property to a new argument. Has that ever happened?
No.
No, we haven't, we haven't had anything that I wear, but it's gone past warning. You know, since we set up the new ordinance and GOOS.
Everything has been taken care of and, you know, if Ms. Fulmer's talking about people going on the trails and things like that, she needs to report that, or if it has been reported, then Iris has taken care of those things. Iris and Alan.
And some of these prior to, is what we're referencing.
That very well could have been. I'm just going off of what's currently happening with the process. And we're spending a considerable amount of money with GOOS to take care of these things. And we've worked with them and we have this program set up and it's running very well from what I've seen.
Thank you.
Other comments? I was directed, Robert. I remember the TDR thing. There was a count made of so many units in the valley. Then when STRs came along, I think at least our recommendation was to the commissioners, hold the approved STRs to what is now approved. Was there a count moved made then of existing STRs?
Yeah, we, we went, we went out and they did a survey of currently who has that.
Or who had the right to do it.
Yeah, and they, I don't have that number with me today, but I can email that number out to you.
Okay, so apparently we've got a little, with the STRs on this one, it's either three sixty four or it's four hundred and nineteen or something. What was in the count?
So in the actual count for this, we're just going off of who has actually obtained business licenses. If there's people that are out there advertising illegally.
No, that's, that's on my list.
Yeah, on this one, we did not look at any counts with those numbers. We just looked at what's currently operating and being managed.
So I think if I understand it right, the applicant is suggesting there are four hundred, all lots in this, which is what, four hundred and nineteen?
Four twenty six minus ninety five.
Okay. I tend to be able to have STRs. But I think staff is saying, well, it's three sixty four minus something.
Yeah.
So my question is, the difference there, was that intended to be counted with? Yeah, these areas were approved for STRs.
That, that was not counted as part of that and nor was areas that are zoned for STRs counted towards that. We didn't count each home and say, you.
Okay, so two different, two different things. So there's never been a count made of how many areas in the.
No, or it was just.
Is it allowed in the zoning?
Yeah, it's just who's operating and who's operating illegally. That was the only thing that's been addressed. I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
So there's a difference between total and three sixty four. Has that always been zoned qualified for STRs?
Just since the PRUD.
Okay.
And it probably was as part of Wolf Creek now that I think about it. And in some areas, we did allow them, and I don't know if this was one of those. Charlie, do you know?
When I was going through the documents, I didn't see anything clear that said that everything is allowed to do short-term rentals or nightly rentals. I can go back and look through the two thousand document and just verify. Because if it does, at the time, they were calling them nightly rentals, not short-term rentals. If it does say that those are allowed anywhere within the Wolf Creek development, then I think the applicant would be right. He'd be entitled to all four, well, four hundred and thirteen, maybe not the thirteen that are on the, from the ET three parcel that isn't part of the. So I can check on that right now and verify.
Okay, I mean, it'd be important to know, wouldn't it?
I, I think so.
Okay, so we don't take away or have to, generally decided in the past.
Mr. Chair, there were a couple other questions for the public. Did you want those addressed?
What were the questions?
The only other ones that I think we haven't really touched on is the question of whether or not the existing Wolf Creek CCNRs and what they apply to will be affected. I think Robert could probably answer that question better than I can, but what we're doing is. I think Robert could probably answer that question better than I can, but what we're doing is a contract between the county and the developer. Has nothing to do with other contracts that are out there, which would include those CCNRs that if they're already applied to the property, they're already applied. The question is whether or not they're applied yet, I don't know. And then the other question that Ms. Fulmer had that we haven't addressed yet, the two of them. One is plant being cabins, not being counted as affordable housing. These aren't plant, plant being cabins. I mean, I suppose they could probably be perceived as that, but they're, they're single-family dwellings. The applicant's calling them cabins because they're small, but they're one thousand square foot, two-bedroom dwellings. Which here in Autumn City is a whole house. And then what is the actual density and will some be allowed in transfer? We actually addressed this in the development agreement as well. Trying to make it clear that the four hundred and twenty-six, if we memorialize them to this property here, they will stay on this property and not be used for transfer in the future. So four twenty-six were rebuilt and if the city, for example, continues to have a TDR program, this development agreement won't grant rights for those to be moved. Doesn't mean that applicant can't work with the city to do that in a different agreement in the future.
Okay, so I have, I mean, my observations really, no, I, I support this application. Creating the overlay makes sense, I think clarity makes sense. I think, and I looked very carefully at the development agreement and Charlie's comments on the side and his opinions these weeks. Those make sense to me as well. And I think a new, city's going to have to do a lot of things quickly and they're going to have to abide by a lot of state laws quickly. And that's just a choice those folks are going to make when they get into that. So I don't see putting any additional bonus on them, the right thing to do at this juncture. But I do think what Charlie has put in his blue boxes and other comments, so he's on the sidebar of the development agreement, makes sense as well. Those are my thoughts.
I like the idea of making the utility projects, roomwork, have permitted use. You know, they have to be there and apply the RE twenty standards for utility, the substations, whatever like that, rather than the CUP. It adds clarity. I like the idea of having it run with the land. So, okay, this developer, whoever develops this one or somebody else who is takes by assignment or whatever, has to follow all these things. Otherwise, I guess he could always come and ask for a change, but he's not entitled to it. It's, we're trying to, we're trying to help make things predictable by saying, okay, this appears good, let's have this. We don't care who gives it to us, just make sure it happens, all things are followed. And with the STRs, I think we're, if they're entitled to everything, then they ought to have the STRs on everything. I think the commission, our planning commission made a recommendation, we limit STRs to what is entitled. What is by zoning, was all, whatever is already approved to be STR land. Okay, that's STRs, but we're not creating them. I, I think those are pretty important things I'd like to see out of here.
I'll ask when somebody does make a motion that they do it slowly and carefully so it can be recorded correctly or they're asked to repeat it, so somebody else doesn't have to repeat it. We'll need to get to that tone. Any other comments? Anybody have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. Move tie, we gotta use micro scissors. How do we handle tie?
Never had that.
I think the chair would decide, maybe through discussion and then.
I heard you loud and clear.
I move forward a positive recommendation to the county commission for filed numbers EMA twenty twenty-four dash eleven. An application reads on approximately two hundred and fifty acres of land that was to be developed. Located approximately forty-eight hundred acres, Fairways Drive. To the master plan development overlay zone and to consolidate the properties based zones from RE twenty, RE fifteen, F V three and F R three zones to the RE twenty zone. I do so in support of including the recommended additional considerations and findings provided by staff in the staff report, but with the following additional edits and corrections. I'd like to see the memorialized development rights, if you can try and mention that. Leave the current county rules and CUPs as they currently are, is my recommendation. Rules are good enough for the county, they should be good enough for the city. And I, I think that that's, that's reasonable to say that the rules are in place for that. Change the assignment to the language that Charlie was reading, but the pro-Charlie found be reverted. What those, those, those changes that you mentioned, you had a different version, make those changes. Those are the edits that I have. That's my motion.
Okay, just for clarity, just so everybody understands, what are, what are, just go over your additions again. A little, you know, not in exact words, but just explain it a little bit.
So I did in support with following the additional edits, changing the assignment language to the language as described by Charlie. It is usually in the papers, but there we found some problems that needed to be addressed. Those be addressed to the proper language that we were supposed to have. And leave the current rules, CUPs, all in place. So if they, you know, they need to make changes to the, whatever that is, as it currently sits with county code. And then, so it's whatever the code is, leave it as the code. And then memorialize the development rights as is. And those are the few changes that I found, and I guess I do so with following findings that are the basically what was found in the staff report. They're supported, the changes are supported by the general plan, it'll help against the general health, safety and welfare of residents.
So you're supporting, your motion supports Charlie's comments with respect to short-term rents?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion is seconded, all in favor?
I've got a question. You refer to the findings in the staff report, but the findings are example findings. You could use this, you could use that.
Scroll up a couple.
Oh, we have, it's going to be funding.
Yeah, I think I'll give you my interpretation of that.
They're right here, staff recommendations on following findings.
If I may, Commissioner Burton, on the staff report, right above, right above model motion, there are three numbered findings that says staff's recommendation is offered with the following findings, and that's listed, one, two, three. It's up near the top of the second last page of the staff report.
Okay, so we have five mission members voting. And we'll call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand, say aye.
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 Since four in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
One opposed. Motion passes. Chair, I'll turn the meeting over.
All right, so moving on with the agenda, we move to number three, the election of the twenty twenty-five chair and vice chair. And Director Broberg, do you want to explain why this is coming up again after six months or so?
Yeah, beginning of each year, we select a new chair and vice chair, even though we did it just a few months ago. So that's part of the order, so I kind of was hoping Courtney would say no. He said, we gotta go through the process. And so we would first look at, I recommend you first look nominating that chair or vice chair. Since, if I may, we usually allow them to explain your decisions.
Oh, sure. So anybody wants to speak on the votes?
So I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna speak in the microphone, and this was in regards to the legislative item, wanting to give space to anyone that wanted to explain the way they voted.
So from my perspective, I think we are limited as a body to either approve or not approve this. And from my perspective, what was proposed by staff made far more sense than what has already been approved in the, I believe it was the two thousand sixteen agreement. And it makes more sense to, to approve what Commissioner Schuman offered as a motion than to deny and not have any control going forward.
That's the same way I saw it, it just seemed to be all the way around to make sense. And what staff had explained in making some adjustments that actually made sense, and we all know what goes to the county commission, they change the opinion anyway, so. It just seemed to make sense.
I think the only one that, I mean, obviously there's discussion on STR, I think that, that, that one's hard, but I think it's fair to say, let's put, let's keep a buffer and then also, you know, the number of units that didn't have STR in there. There is those, you know, however many in the forty acres, so, so that was kind of how I wrestled with that. The leave the CUP and the outsourced rules, those the reason I think that it's important is I have faith in the people that, you know, in our community members. I think they can handle it justly, you know, yeah, maybe it'll cause a fight, but I hope it doesn't. I hope that the people can do it the right way, and I think that we're, you know, I have faith in our, our people. So I think that, you know, yeah, it, it, it leaves it open to some extent, but it also, it takes some load off the county. It was the, it's the current code as we have it. And if there's, I don't see a reason why we can't have people that be elect to this new city be able to manage this in a proper way, not both that they do, but that's my hope.
I think it's important to know, at least from my perspective, that the new city will still have to follow the ordinances and the rules and the laws that are in place. They can't just disregard this and say, we don't like it because it's too many or it's not. They still have to follow the rules. And, and I think the applicant has the right to say, I want to know, right? Because if I, if I need to take legal action, I will. And where they're willing to abide by this modification, I think it's beneficial to the, not only the county, but to the future city.
I'll explain my vote. I was the one ranger tonight. I think first of all, with the CUP idea. If it comes up as a CUP, then you have to look and see, okay, what are the, what are the standards for the CUP? Okay, they're in RE twenty. And what I suggested was, okay, just don't make it a CUP. Apply the standards in RE twenty, same standards. They can't do something they couldn't do otherwise, it just avoids some contention that could arise, and contention is not good for anybody. Number two, the idea of running with the land, I think it does, anyway, by operation of law. I think if it's clarified that it does run with the land, it has the potential to avoid future losses about things like that.
On that point, just, I want to make sure my motion is even clear. I, I'm not, my motion was not to lock it in with the one version, it was to go with what Charlie was reading, which enabled it to, but basically the city could deny, which I guess is a problem, but that's the standard language that was in there, that's what it was, not to say it needed to sign just there.
And then Charlie was turned the same one thing and I was reading that it said something else. What I was reading is common in this kind of agreement. It, it's all kinds of things, leases, all kinds of stuff. It's good language. In what was in the written document. What he was saying contradicted that a little bit. The written is perfect, it's the way it is, it works. So don't go off and try and reinvent the wheel with something else. And it wasn't clear to me what he was saying, but anyway.
I, I think I could agree that there, my, my, my thought with that was to go with what Charlie was saying, is what they had read on. But I don't know what I saw, so I guess there's a little unclearness.
So is the written kind of the proposed?
There were parts in the written that I, that's what I meant, but there were some things he said needed to be changed from what was agreed on. And I, I thought, I wanted to include that, because that's what my motion is. So the written plus what Charlie said is supposed to be changed, which I guess is a difference.
So is the written development agreement language, what the county and the applicant came up with?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what they agreed to.
He mentioned there was a change, that's what I, I.
Yes, Charlie referenced some modifications to that language that did not make it into the version that you saw in the written staff report. And so that is something that he will be working with the applicant on, is how I understood it.
That's what I was saying, I want those changes made as a party.
And that's what we understood the motion to be. So I think Commissioner Burton, you're saying your objection to that aspect of the motion is that you would be completely happy with the language as you see it in the staff report from the.
Yeah, if they came back and made a motion and say, just the language I'm saying works.
Yeah, so I think your, I think your explanation of that is understood.
And I'm thrilled with the idea that we're simplifying it and making it an own zone. And county and applicant seem to be in agreement, so why not? So I wouldn't object into that. And the STRs, whatever they're entitled to. It's already decided, so figure out what it was and was decided, but whatever.
Okay, any other comments on the way you voted? All right, so we need to, with the election, you said it should be particular, starting with the chair issue. Any nominations?
I would nominate Janet, Janet Bonferris chair for this year, since we're going to cease to exist at the end of this year.
I'll second that.
I would nominate, well, I guess we need to vote.
Who's that?
And I guess I should say, are you willing to continue in that position?
I am willing to continue, thank you. So I guess.
We just pick a vote.
We call further?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Say, six to zero, affirmative, all right. Motion's for vice chair.
I would nominate Jeff Barber to continue in that position throughout this year. As we will no longer be a body at the end of this year, if he's willing to accept that opportunity and, and position.
You know, I'll continue.
Second.
Call for a vote? I'll say aye.
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 Six to zero.
That was easy.
All right, remarks from planning commissioner, excuse me, public comment items for things that are not on the agenda. Anyone still online?
The rules now are governed by the county commission, so you don't have any control on those.
The rules now are governed by the county commission, so you don't have any control on those. And that's how it was supposed to be all along, according to state law, so it's not something the county commission just did. They were complying with state code.
Martha, it looks like Jan has her hand up.
Um, can I speak?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, um, thank you very much, but I've been, something is really screwy about this Zoom session. Um, I've been texting people via my cellphone. They haven't been able to raise their hand, they get a message saying, raising your hand is disabled. I'm getting messages saying people have left the meeting, but they're still listed as participants. I, something is very strange, I, I, I don't know what's happening. And I could not chat with these people, because I was getting a message saying chat is disabled. I'm, I'm, I just want to let you folks know, something's not right here.
Thank you for letting us know, I see I think there's a message from Kay as well, saying that she wants to raise her hand but can't.
Yes.
Okay, um, Jan, is there anything else that you wanted to let us know?
Um, no, it just is that I kept getting messages saying people, you know, that were listed as participants were leaving the meeting, but they're still there. So it, on us, Janet, it was just strange, very strange.
Thank you for letting us know that, uh, we can tell that from this position, so thank you for letting us know.
And there was another gentleman, I believe, uh, uh, Jim Hall, also was not able to raise his hand, it was disabled, and he he was texting me my cellphone because we couldn't chat, you know, to send a message back and forth during the meeting.
Thank you, Jan, I'm gonna go ahead and ask Kay to speak as well.
Sure. Thank you, I was one of these people trying desperately to raise my hands and trying to text some of you, and um, even putting a message on my profile saying, please let me talk, so something something was not working properly, because I use Zoom all the time. I do want to say, um, I'm the president of the Master Homeowners Association, and am very familiar with the 2002 ZDA zoning development agreement. That's, that agreement, uh, by its terms was filed, um, against the property, recorded against the property. Um, the parties agreed in the agreement, it runs with the land. And it provides, um, the method for, um, doing other development agreements pursuant to and under the umbrella of that 2002 ZDA. And also, the CCNRs, as Charlie acknowledged, this this particular development agreement under consideration is not intended to disrupt other contracts. The, the CCNRs are stronger than a contract, their property right are a property covenant that runs with the land, so I think legally, it would be very wise to look at that agreement. There, you know, it's, if, if the commission is looking for certainty and predictability, which is so important in the business of land development, um, I'm very reluctant to see the underlying 2002 agreement just cast aside, because maybe it wasn't written beautifully. Um, there are ways to adjust that under that agreement and pursuant to the agreement. What happens when in another 15 years, someone comes along with this current agreement under consideration and says, oh, there are ambiguities, we don't like it, we're gonna rewrite it, and ignore, ignore the prior obligation, so I think there is a severe legal defect in proceeding the way this proposal is proceeding. And I'd encourage counsel to look at that and not discard what is filed and what is recorded and runs with the land, because you would have done it a different way.
Okay, thank you. I think that's Jim Hall, are you able to unmute and speak? I think we saw on the chat that you wanted to speak, and we're not able to put your hand up. Mr. Hall?
Like, speaking.
It sounds like you're speaking, but we can't really hear you. You were able to take yourself off, off of mute, but I'm not able to hear you.
Message the bottom mark.
Yes. Can we open the chat again, please, and see if so, um, I'm gonna read this into the public record, uh, since we seem to be having trouble with Mr. Hall, it's from Jim, and it says, all of the county's promotion of development, including this at Nordic Valley, will add to the costs of Ogden Valley City. We will inherit these without making the decision ourselves. For example, the county commissioned two water sewer studies, 2019 and 2022, both said to not provide more development without addressing these issues. Additionally, they will increase the need for emergency services and sheriff. Furthermore, surface streets, the county is committing the city to huge costs only to provide support to developers. I hope that that takes care of what Jim wanted to say. There anyone else present? Or online? Oh, I apologize, there was a Jim attached to the chat, and it looks like Mr. Hall is saying that that was not him. Okay, if we're not seeing anybody else come through, this is an odd night for Zoom, uh, we are going to move forward with remarks from planning commissioners.
I have a comment. As far as the city goes, I found a lot on this, we, we elected the county commissioners to, to do the job that they're doing, and so as far as a new city, we elected the county commissioners to be the elected body, even though the county city has been elected, so I guess my, my comment is, we elected the county commissioners, they, it's still their turn to lead, and so that, that's my comment is, you know, yeah, there's a new city, but the county is, is still the elected officials, and it's still their, 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 their elected body, so. Um, that's my comment to everyone, is the, you know, as far as inheriting and whatnot, the county, that, the, the members of the county that we voted in are, are elected body until January, so that's, that's how it is.
Also, it is. Any other remarks from planning commissioners? All right. Mr. Grover, planning director report.
Um, we have a planning commissioner dinner coming up, February 18th. At 6:30, we don't have the venue totally nailed down, so we'll let you know, we'll send that out, so. You're doing, Brunner Mill's going all over that it's at, like, Bruce Chris. Like that, yeah, my budget may not like that. Yeah, um, we'll probably try to stick with him, Peabody County, so. And then, just for your information, um, just at the start of the year, um, there is that, I mean, the map's laid out of what areas will be left out, but, um, Snow Basin, um, will still be part of the county. And there area comes down to the highway, um, on the map, and then, uh, Powder Mountain. So Nordic, um, will stay in the, the new city, um, and so the, the boundaries have been identified, right now they're just working on creating the different, um, voting areas, and just so, Chair, you mentioned, you want a little more clarification on that?
I did, so, um, I had asked Director Grover to speak about this year of transition, um, what the rules are, these are state rules about who's in charge and who's responsible for, um, seeing everything on the, on the planning end, uh, property owners have rights that they have to come in and and work with what they want to do, and, um, and so I asked the director to discuss this transition year, whose responsibilities that fall to, but also moving forward, because although the area within the boundary has voted to incorporate, there will still be unincorporated Upper Valley or Ogden Valley, because there are areas outside those boundaries, and in that case, there will still need to be a planning commission or some sort of organization to handle those areas.
Yeah. And most likely, what will happen is, um, the county will either choose to have two planning commissions, one up there, and then one down here in those areas, or they may combine them. But there's language that allows them to do that, um, when the, the time comes. And as far as right now, um, basically, business as usual. You'll be reviewing the applications that come in, um, we'll be looking at those, making sure, um, they comply with the ordinances and the general plan, and then, um, just kind of continue on, so.
Is there likely to be a workshop meeting next week?
Oh, that, there's not, we don't have anything on there, so you guys are off the hook, so you don't have to worry about that, so yeah, thank you. We appreciate it.
So, so confirming that last comment, there will be no meeting next week?
No meeting, well, unless you're really, what I kind of.
No, I just, I, I wondered, anyway, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, no meeting.
Okay.
So, just curious, did, did, Snow Basin is not part of the new city?
Correct, Snow Basin's part of the county, and Powder Mountain is part of the county.
And does that extend down the Highway 39?
It does, um, there's an area, if you look on the maps, where it comes down, um.
The old church farm.
Yeah. Well, I'm not positive, it, I'm not sure where the old church farm is, but I know that there's a segment that comes down, and it's identified on the map. Okay.
It's certainly worth everybody looking at the map and the, and the boundary lines, because there is Upper Valley excluded from it, that will still remain unincorporated.
So, as an example, not to belabor this, but it's supposed hypothetically, Snow Basin decided that they wanted to have Club Med build a hotel. Is that within this group's purview?
Yes, yes, that is within this group's purview. We would look at the development agreement and make sure it's complying with it. Same thing with Powder Mountain, if there's something happening up at Powder Mountain, we look at the development agreement and make sure that's complying with it, and the ordinances are in place.
And this group's purview up until incorporation, if any of us live within the incorporated boundaries, we would not be on the
So, but there
The Ogden Valley.
Nobody lives in Snow Basin's area.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So, so Powder Mountain's group will be the one that.
Oh, no, 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 everybody here would be out.
Yeah, and so that, again, that's, so my understanding is what you're saying is, to be on the Weaver County Upper Valley Planning Commission, you have to be with, out, out, within
You cannot let the, the city's boundaries.
Yeah, you have to be outside of the.
Right, we'll have our own planning commission within the municipality.
Thanks.
Um, Cartland, any remarks from legal counsel?
Yes, the comment that was made about the 2002 agreement is worth looking into, and I have not been asked, um, but I recall to specifically look into that, another question was asked of Charlie, whether essentially, they just get out of that by forming this new agreement, but, um, it's okay with Rick, um, I'll speak with him about looking into that more closely, because that may be a hurdle here, we need to look into that.
Yes.
Yeah.
I was gonna actually direct you, if I may, to say, please get with Kay, she is the president of the HOA of Wolf Creek. So I think she's speaking directly to, contracts it under, she, she has knowledge and workings of, but it's the sentiment of the comment is worth exploring in terms of what other past agreements are out there, and if those contracts are supposed to run with the land, then this is not to supersede it as well, so that's could be a thorn coming up, yeah, to, to make sure you take advantage of knowing what's in those.
Yes.
Okay, make a motion to adjourn. So move, good night, everybody.